Said if we get going.
Yes, sir.
Great. And planning board members, I'm seeing so Rich, Mac, Craig, I saw there. Am I missing anybody? Okay, so we have a quorum. Hi, George. Okay. Let us get started. This is a public hearing. I'd like to make sure to go over a few guidelines for us this evening that we received actually from the main municipal association. And I'd like to read these out to everybody in attendance now so we'd know how we might want to proceed. The first part would be asking from the applicant or representative. Oh, thank you, Anthony. Yes. And maybe people can see this, we're sharing the same things I'm reading out loud here. We'll be looking for a short presentation, which would be a summary of the application. Thanks, Anthony. That looks good. After that, we'd go into section where if there are questions of the applicant by the chair and the board members would have some that opportunity. Three questions and comments by Butters and other interested parties. Questions of the applicant will be made through the chair. Or questions of Butters and interested parties presenting comments by board members and the applicant. Chair. And rebuttals by applicant. Or any of the commenters. And so keeping that in mind, that would be like the guidelines we'd like to offer for tonight. Going forward, we ask that everyone remains civil. Is this custom during the town meetings? Everyone wishing to speak should digitally raise their hand. And I just want to make sure people know how to do that. Using Zoom is a feature. If you go to the participants. I think I show that. Standby. Under the reactions area at the bottom, there's a raised hand feature. So with your cursor, you'd go and raise your hand. And Roger has done so. Thank you, Roger. Lower my hand. There we go. Perfect. So I'd like to use that feature because we'd like to try to keep track of everybody who has a comment. And that is one way to visibly see that. Um, after you have spoken, lower your hand, please. We will keep running list of who wishes to speak. Each speaker will be called by name when it is his or her time to speak. Everyone who wishes to will have an opportunity to speak up to five minutes. Time may be extended at the discretion of the chair. Unless it is your turn to speak, please you keep your mic muted and refrain from interrupting others. Lastly, attendees who become insulting or unseverable may have their mics muted by the meeting direction of the chair. So that's where we are with this one. Thanks, Anthony. I think we're seeing still that. Guess we can keep that all up. There we go. Okay, so I think where we are now is at the number one, which would be a short presentation by the applicant summarizing the application. So I guess I would look to Jeff, perhaps, if you'd be ready to do so.
Sure. Just very briefly, I think also tonight here, we have my supervisor, Al Hodson, as well as Mr. And Mrs. Grant and Roger Katz, who's the attorney for Mr. Grant. So yeah, basically, this is the project we've been talking about for some time now. It's a a boatyard that the applicant wishes to license under the commercial development regulation. He has an existing license under the home occupation that covers many of these items, but at this point he wishes to be able to expand his business a little bit and kind of catch up with some of the things that have he's been doing. And potentially hire some more people because it's you know, the business is expanding and growing. So we're looking forward to the meeting tonight and I think if anybody has any questions about the application, I look forward to addressing them.
Sure. It might be good at this point to say that we've been mentioned, we've gone through quite a number of meetings where we've reviewed what has been presented to the board from the applicant. And at this point, we have sought legal opinion to help us determine if the application is complete and we the opinion we've received is that substantively it is complete and that we were certainly okay to proceed, knowing that should there be something that would be missing that might be a conditional part of any any action taken going forward. And before going any further, I guess I would also turn to the my board members. Have I missed anything yet? Or Anthony, have I overlooked anything?
No, sir, but I do note that Mr. Grant's legal counsel has his hand raised. So I don't know if you wanted to add something that Mr. Allen has said.
Okay, I guess I would turn to Roger Katz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's actually pronounced Kate's, but that's okay.
I'm sorry.
No one gets it right. So that's quite all right. Thank you. First of all, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to apologize to you because I had sent you a letter yesterday suggesting that appropriate public notice had not been given. And I was wrong. I was acting on bad information. I'm sorry about that. And it was given and we're we're sorry that I sent that. I did. The only thing I'd add is that we're glad to hear that the application is now been deemed to be complete. I think that's true as of February 22nd. And Mr. Allen and Mr. Hodston and my client certainly happy to answer any questions that you have about the application. We think it's complete. We think we've we've covered all the bases and that it's ripe for approval, but happy to explore any aspects that you deem appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. And Samantha, do you have some something to say?
Yeah, just for newcomers, I wanted, I was wondering if you wanted to remind folks that this is not related to the home base business permit. That it doesn't affect the home base business permit that's already in existence.
Right, that the home base permit is in existence, that this application, regardless of what happens to it, does not impact the home base business. That's what we're saying, right? So okay, great point. Thank you, Samantha. And just so you know, your hand is still raised, or at least I'm seeing it that way. And Sean, thanks.
Was I just recognized?
Yes, I thought I saw a hand clap there.
Oh, sorry. No, I thought I was putting my hand on you. I haven't figured the system out yet. Anyway, I also wanted to interject that, you know, this is also you know, part of the consent agreement that was reached with the state when we lost our battle in Supreme Court with the town regarding the renting of our docks. I was mandated in that or asked however the term whatever the proper terminology is to apply for this permit. So that was the basis of the starting of this process. Is there a gain for me to be able to employ another person or two? Ken, right. But again, you know, this started as a result of the consent agreement.
Thanks, Sean. That helps set the course for what we're on now. So here we are. Okay, so we've gone through that part. Let me turn to the the board members. The second part of this hearing guidelines says questions of the applicant by the chair and board members. I guess I would ask the the board members. Do you wish that we take that in this order now? And if so, please let me know. Let me turn to each of them and ask. George?
I don't know why we wouldn't, why we would vary from that schedule, but if it is, if others deem it appropriate so that the we're assured of allowing the public to have their say, that's fine with me. I do want to just let you know, Peter, I do have a fair number of questions because I'm concerned out of fairness to the applicant that those be put on the record tonight rather than waiting till the next meeting, at which time we have to make it a decision and determine our findings of fact and law. So I have a fairly lengthy list of questions.
Okay, that helps level set, George. Thanks. So and I too agree that it would be fair to approach this as the guidelines have suggested, but I just want to make sure that the applicant is aware of. You know, if we have questions, it could get into some discussions and that then could also lengthen the meeting and so on. So I just want to make sure people are aware. That's all. Rich, you wish to proceed anyway?
Yeah, the only question I have is if the when the publics ask questions, they may raise questions with us. Will we have an opportunity to ask those questions later on afterward?
Oh, that which comes from the public?
Yeah, if publics asking questions, it may come to us as kind of thinking, oh, that raises a question for me or whatever actually creates a question.
Yep. The answer is yes, we'll have an opportunity to ask them. Turn to both Craig and then and Mac. So Craig, you okay if we proceed this way? Questions to the applicant?
Yes, stay on, stay on course.
Thank you. And Mac?
Yes.
Okay, let's do so. So this is the section where we'd have questions of the applicant by the chair and board member. So let me, let me, before we go to George, because I know he's already given a given us a little preview that there will be a number of questions, which is fine. Are there any other initial questions that someone would like to ask? I'll go in reverse order this time. So Mac, do you have any initial questions for the applicant?
I guess I have a question on the site plan. There's a couple of places where it says C note, but I don't see any notes anywhere.
There, let me dig up the plan. Where are you referring to, sir?
So if you look up on the top left.
See note to, yeah, those are carryover.
I'm sorry.
From the, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I think those are carryovers from the survey plan that we based this on. And so we didn't have to include the survey plan. And so those, that's, that's where those notes are from.
Okay, so there's no notes attached to this site plan?
No. Those should have been edited off there perhaps, but they weren't.
And I know that the site plan basically draws one giant parcel and I'm assuming calculations in your application are based on that one giant parcel. For example, in the phosphorus calculations, it's from the whole parcel, but there's not actually one giant parcel. There are multiple parcels. So I wonder why you didn't break that out. In other words, the site plan does not match the tax map.
The actually, the some of the tax maps are actually outdated because one of the parcels had been sold. So yeah, the phosphorus does match the entire area because it's being treated as one lot, all controlled by the applicant. I don't know how you would break that out separately or if that would doesn't seem to be the way to do it.
Well, just I know that the site plan doesn't match the tax map. So I mean, if you say the tax maps are outdated, that I guess I'm a little confused as to why you would include in an application things that don't match up. That's confusing to me.
We included the the actual information rather than the tax max because the tax map tax maps were outdated. So we use the the current information and we don't want to take credit for land that the applicant does not control. And that's what would have done if we had taken into account the area on the tax maps. Because they're they differ from what our surveyors told us.
So on on the, based on my reading of the of the deed, the parcel where the the where the commercial business exists should have eight foot pedestrian easement going to the back lot. But that's not on the site plan. And why that is? Just because it could affect what can or cannot be done in terms of stormwater management access, screening, that kind of thing.
No, I I believe the there may be an easement for access for pedestrian access, but I did not find that here. Apparently, the surveyors did not find that as well when they made the basement for us.
Right, but but it's in the deeds that I read. I mean, the deeds included in the application clearly stayed an easement.
Okay.
That's also part of my confusion why you treat it as one giant lot because again, the deeds don't match that. It's not one giant lot. So.
Yeah, but but it's all controlled by the applicant.
Right. Well, I disagree with that too, because that's not what the deeds say.
I guess that's a legal issue that I'm not aware of.
I interject, I don't know how to stick my hand up here.
Do you have an answer for Max's question?
Exactly. Okay, Mac, the reason that isn't there is because I bought the land from the gentleman that had the easement down through. He's gone out. I own it.
We both own it. It's included in the map. It's actually the driveway to the to the parking lot area is that easement that allowed people before the land behind it was being bought that would allow people to access the water pedestrian, but it's all included in the map.
Well, I'm just saying what I have in front of me doesn't clearly show that. So that was my question. Also, there's when I there's a on the site plan, you list a boat storage area again near the existing commercial development, but there's no boat storage area delineated off of Red Oaks Lodge Road. And yet there's tons of boats being stored there. So.
Yeah, I didn't put it out there because there is no specific defined area. He hasn't created an area to put the boats in. They're just being stored on the land without disturbing it any more than the needs be. I know if you've you can see in the photos that were taken or if you've driven by there, that area is basically undisturbed. They're able to drive over there and, you know, park the boats without disturbing the or park the trailers without disturbing the land any more than the needs be. So I think Mr. Grant had his hand up. I'm going to go.
Yeah, sure. I was just curious what Max's tacos definition of tons of boats was. There's 12 boats out there. 10 of them are owned by myself awaiting restorage when my shop can. And there's two that belong to customers. And it was just a convenient place to stick them. But there is the only gravel that has happened back there is where there is a little storage shed park. Everything else is as mother nature and me after removing some standing timber.
Thank you, Sean.
I just think the site plan should show what's actually out there. If you're going to have boats, if the application is for boat storage, it should show boat storage. You have it up near the actual commercial development. At the same time, there are two sheds out there off of Red Oaks Lodge Road. And those are not shown on the map and neither are they in the application.
I don't, I didn't include the the structures because they're temporary structures. They can be moved in any time. They're not not on a foundation or anything. They're just just storage sheds.
So so Jeff, let me just say that typically when we're looking for what's on a plan, we're asking for what's on the ground. It should match.
Okay, but between when I produce the plan and when we, you know, we get to review it, those could have been moved. We can put them on there. Yeah.
Well, I I guess I disagree with what is a temporary shed because they they don't look very temporary to me. So I think they should definitely have been part of the calculation.
So let's hold it right there because there are, I think there are definitions and we can turn is Gary here?
I am here.
Hey, Gary. So we're just looking for, just to have some clarity to this, so we have a common understanding of what's going on. Some some comments about what is a temporary structure. Can you help us with that definition, please?
I I typically do not consider a shed a temporary structure. We issue permits for sheds all the time. So
correct.
And they're taxed on those structures as well.
Correct. Even if they are small or
that's correct.
Right. And let me turn to George. George, I see your hand up. Do you have a definition to help us out?
Yeah, I do. The definition of structure in the ordinance, and I'm on page 48, is anything constructed or erected on the ground or which is attached to something located on the ground. So those are clearly structures.
So to add to that, there are things such as temporary structures that have been permitted in the town of Belgrade. And I think if I'm not mistaken, one of the key features was it was on wheels. Gary, does that ring a bell with other things that have been permitted?
Don't know that I remember a shed structure on wheels. I can't remember where that was or when that was.
All right. All right, thanks. So I'm going on memory. So that's probably not as good. Anyway, we've got the definition that we've talked about. I think that applies here. So that's where we are. Samantha, did you have something?
Yeah, just relative to those two sheds that neither one of them are attached. They're on blocks. And they they're movable. So I don't know that that would fit the definition that George just read. Neither one are attached to the ground.
They both arrived on flatbed trailers, hydraulically set down onto concrete blocks. I can pick them up tomorrow and move them again.
Yep, thank you. We're good. Okay.
Resolve that now. What what do you? How, what do you need to have done to?
From my opinion, what I'm what I'm seeing by the definition that that George read to us from our ordinance, that is on the ground, it's it's a structure. We ask for the indication of structures that are on the ground when an application comes before us to be shown on the permit on the site plan.
Okay.
Thanks, Mac.
Okay, we can move on.
Okay, thank you. So when you say move on, no more questions from you at this time?
Correct.
Okay. Let me go down. So in my Brady bunch of you, Craig, you're next to me, next to Mac. Do you have any questions at this time?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thanks, Craig. I'm going across my horizon. Rich?
A couple of questions regarding the, I noticed actually, the inside of the building where the paints lined up kind of looks like my basement, but the thought came to mind is apparently there must be a fair amount of refinishing, painting or whatever, especially the wooden boats or whatever. And I was wondering what Mr. Grant does with the waste paint thinners and stuff like that. Or even even the cans of paint that maybe half gone. Are you hearing me, Peter?
Yeah, yeah, I'm trying to get back there. Anyway, um, well, first off, I wouldn't have thinner leftover. We'll run that till the bottle's empty and that goes in the trash. Very seldom do we have leftover paint, but if there is paint still in a can, it goes in our dumpster and our trash people haul it away.
The question, some of that, I guess, is oil based paint or it's not, it's not latex.
No, we wouldn't use latex in a marine application.
I wouldn't think so. Yeah. I guess I just don't know whether it's illegal to just throw that stuff in a dumpster. George may have some idea, but
Again, sir, that happens very seldom, but I will say that of course there is every now and then a can that still has some in the bottom of it. But it's not like it's some regular or even remotely regular occurrence. The these materials we use are very expensive, you know, three, $400 a gallon. We don't waste it.
So what's when you're done, do you clean your brushes with paint thinner or something of that nature?
We don't use too many brushes, to be honest with you. We use a lot of foamies disposable. We use a lot of rolling on. We roll and tip in the shop primarily or we spray.
Okay. I, from the pictures, I noticed you had the the two waste oil drums and
Yes, there's one waste oil, one waste gasoline.
Yeah, what what's the capacity? I noticed it's sitting on
The capacity is 120% of the gallons sitting on top there all.
Okay.
I will add that DP's been out and Jen Jesperspen has also reviewed all of our and made recommendations regarding all of that a couple of years ago. So it's it's met their standards.
Okay, the last question I had was the boat storage area. Are there portions of that boat storage area or sometimes that like a boat may stay in that spot and that spot is essentially covered for the course of the year?
The only ones that would happen with would be boats that I own personally.
And that would be approximately how many?
Right now, next week, I mean, right now, it's probably I probably own close to 12, 15 boats.
Okay.
Force of contention, maybe.
But when I say that, I'm talking total boats. 90% of those get launched, but I do have several that I own that haven't moved in several years. There's one right in front of my shop right beside the street. It's been there for five years now. Trying to find time to get to it, but I haven't got there yet. You're welcome.
I guess that's the question.
Thanks, Rich. Thanks, Sean, and thanks, Samantha. Um, Pete Sargent, good to see you tonight. Do you have any questions for the applicant? We're going, we're at a time now where where the board is asking the applicant questions. Um, we're going, we're at a time now where, where the board is asking the applicant questions. So Pete, I must interrupt, you're, you're muted at this time.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, I was late tonight, so, um, I apologize for that, please getting home. Um, I don't have any questions at all this time.
Okay, and so Pete, just so you know, we, we went through the guidelines, so this is just one time where we, if we have specific questions, we're asking them of the applicant. And then there might be another time, uh, after we go through questions and comments from either the butters or the applicant that might generate more. So that's where we are with this.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. George?
Thank you. My first question is, uh, related, uh, for Mr. Allen, uh, or anybody else from the applicant. Is not unrelated to, uh, Max's questions and as, um, sort of a preface, I would say, I, I want to make sure everybody understands, particularly by the applicant, that this, if the board should approve this, uh, it'll be approved with a standard condition that has all commercial development ordinance, uh, review, uh, permits are issued with a, uh, standard condition. It basically says in layman's terms, you get approval for what you apply for, nothing more. So I'm attempting to clarify, um, what you're actually applying for, because we don't write blank checks. So my first question is, uh, are all the structures, services and operations you wish approval for listed in your application and shown on the site plan? And so, for example, the site visit photos show the, uh, sheds and the, the shed and the new shed and the hoop structure. We've already discussed that. Uh, another example was, um, mentioned made in earlier meetings when we were going through whether the application was, uh, complete or not of boat washing and boat rentals. Neither of those are either listed in the application where it's relevant, uh, which is question sixteen, or shown on the site plan.
Sure, I, I guess the answer to your first question is no, because we don't have those sheds on there, so we need to put those on the site plan. Uh, we do need to include that, and I'm not sure you have the latest and greatest application, because in the latest revision I sent in for the site plan, I mean, uh, on line sixteen, we list, uh, boat, a boat restoration shop provide boat tours, boat rentals, boat brokerage and sales, and boat storage. Though that, uh, list of activities was, was expanded for that.
I'm operating over the second application that you filed, which was dated February fourth.
Right, uh, subsequent to that, I filed another copy of that the thirty-eight page application with the planning board chair or a planning board secretary. So that, that should be, uh, should be in there somewhere.
Well, that's news to me.
It also included the other items that were, that were requested at the last meeting. There were some updates.
If that's already addressed, great, you know?
Yeah.
I think, and I apologize in advance, uh, I had actually checked what was online at the town office. And I didn't see any difference, differences between the two applications, but, uh, obviously I'm in error and I apologize for that. Just bear with me if I ask a question that is in the same vein where you've already addressed and we'll move on quickly then.
Okay.
The, um, my next, uh, series of questions have to do, um, with where on the property boats and trailers are actually, uh, stored now and where they're going to be stored in the future. Um, and whether boat and trailer storage is going to be limited to that shown on the site plan, which they, what I'm operating, uh, off of only has boat shown as being stored on the fifty-five hundred square area that you're gonna, uh, you're proposing to put, um, the engineered turf. We've already talked about Red Lodge, uh, road and, and, and photo showing boats being stored there. There are also boats being stor-, uh, well, let, let's, let's leave it at that for now and, and, and I'll follow up if I need to.
Okay, yeah, they, uh, I think if we are going to be revising the site plan, uh, we can show boat storage areas on, uh, Red Lodge Road, that's, that's something we would do. Uh, and that fifty-five hundred square feet area that you referred to there, uh, again, that's mainly being re, resurfaced, being addressed to meet phosphorus and stormwater requirements, so that's going to be revegetated, thus giving less runoff. But, um, the, the boat storage, is it also done in parking spaces out front? Uh, as, as Mr. Grant mentioned earlier, there, there were several spots out front. Uh, these got boats parked, one for five years, I guess, but, um, we'll try to identify that a little bit better where the boat storages will be.
Thank you.
George, um, Samantha has her hand up, do you mind if I just go?
Not at all.
All right, I just, I just wanted to, um, see if you could provide differentiation under the home-based business there. You know, obviously we have boats going in and out. My understanding, our understanding was with, with the consent agreement discussions with the attorney is what we needed to apply for through the commercial permit is actual storage not related to and from our initial discussion with the planning board. So my, my point being is there was a differentiation between actual just straight storage and boats that we're working on. Which are most of the case. Well, we were asked to define the back parking lot area specifically because as part of the home-based business, we would have boats. Obviously, if you have a boat repair shop, you have boats in wait. So, I mean, we, I obviously don't mind putting that, but I just wanted to make that, there, there's a nuance there that when, in talking with the town's attorney, his reference was to actual winterization storage and leaving boats there over the winter.
Wait, George?
That makes sense?
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, that's a nuance that I didn't pick up in the application because there's nothing there about it. Um, the, uh, I, I would ask that the site plan reflect where it is you're applying for to store boats and trailers as part of this commercial app, application.
Okay.
All, all the locations, please. Um, the, um,
You want to, do you want us to break down what's being stored, as, as Mrs. Grant said, for, uh, work on at the shop or ones that are being stored for winterization? I, I'm, I'm not sure how to make that differentiation.
Uh, I, I don't either. It's sort of a mishmash at, at the moment, it appears, um.
And, and I think that's the way it probably will continue because, um, you know, if, if they're working on a boat, they pull a, pull a boat out of storage to, to do some maintenance work to it, that frees up a hole, they could put another boat in there. And whether that's an all, a long-term storage or if that's a a temporary, uh, one that's waiting to be worked on, you know? I, I think they're trying to park where they can, and so.
One possible suggestion, uh, and ultimately the burden's on you folks, but is, um, that, uh, I noticed when looking at uh, back, uh, Google Earth photos, that it's pretty clear when, uh, after the, what has been done since that, since whatever the two thousand eight or so, uh, permit was issued for the home occupation, uh, boat, uh, boat shop. And I would say anything since then is part and parcel, uh, should be part or parcel of this application.
Not sure how to break that out, but I'll give it a shot.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I, I had, I saw a hand up Samantha, but then it went down, are you okay? Okay, and, um, Sean, I'm seeing you clapping, which I'm thinking you mean to have your hand raised.
I still haven't figured out the whole hand thing. I, I don't see the icon, but anyway.
But I got you, man.
Yeah, yeah, all right, cool. Um, I know, I totally lost my train of thought.
All right, well, if it comes back, it will, we'll
Boat storage, boat storage. You know, I think we identified the parking areas too, and I think it's reasonable to say the parking areas might be used for temporary shuffling boats. And I think that that's, that's, that, that's not really storage. Based on the discussions with the town's attorney is that's not considered storage. If we're moving boats around to work on them, um, the, the, the in our discussions on the negotiations of the consent agreement, he was pretty clear that, you know, what we're talking about is storage, that's a storage area for winter storage specifically of boats, not so much related to the existing, a, and of course, we can put that in there, but, but, but I don't know that I would call that storage if boats are being moved around.
Okay, thank you, Samantha, and, um, but three other hands, four other hands, Mac, we'll get to you first.
Peter, could I complete my questions first? I think we're gonna stick to the protocol.
I, I did want to stick, yes, by all means, Mac, I'm sorry, well.
I don't mind being interrupted by the applicant or their, or their consultants, but I think others should wait their turn.
Okay, thank you.
Well, then I'm jumping in. So just to clarify, George, the fifty-five hundred, we're talking about, uh, you know, putting down some reinforcement and it's not my whole parking area, number one. It is a portion thereof. Number two, possibly, you know, your Google Earth, uh, you know, pics are showing you what has changed since two thousand eight, but as I said in several meetings ago to you, sir, we did none of that without C E O knowledge and approval. We didn't cut a tree, we didn't move a stone. It was deemed I didn't need to be permitted for that at that time, so let, let's just kind of keep this clear here.
I would just, um, say this, um, you're asking us to approve your commercial operation after the fact, after it's been constructed and after it's been in operation.
I have a permit to operate when I am operating. There are one or two small facets of my operation that may be in question, but could be litigated.
I'm not going to argue with you, we'll leave that to the attorneys if it comes to that. Um, the, if, I just, I need to know what I'm being asked to approve, and so far you're not being very helpful.
Well, it's certainly not the intent, because I don't enjoy any of this time.
So my basic concern is where are the boats and trailers going to be stored that are not a part of your home occupation? And if, and wherever that locations are, that needs to be, uh, uh, shown on the site plan and taken into consideration if they haven't already into the calculations for the stormwater plan and the phosphorus control plan.
And so are you, uh, just to clarify, are you talking about all boats, my boats, customers' boats? Customers' boats are the only ones that should be in question. I should be able to park as many damn boats as I own personally as I wish.
Well, let's put it this way, you're asking for approval of, uh, your
Because I was mandated to do so, but go on.
The, um, uh, you're, you're asking in this application for approval of your, uh, boat shop um, so that it can expand beyond a, uh, home occupation, which is, has a limit of two employees.
That is the only gain for me. I am asking because I was instructed to do so.
If, um, that is still your intent, as is indicated in the application, the, um, it would include the boats that are waiting to be repaired or restored, as well as those boats that are, uh, in, uh, storage for customers.
You are saying personal property, in other words.
If those are boats that you're gonna be repairing and selling or, or whatever, yes. I mean, it's part of your boat restoration business, isn't it?
Some are, some aren't. For example, there's a nineteen fifty-one Chris Craft Rubiera that's out there for myself. There is a nineteen fifty-seven Chris Craft semi-enclosed out there for myself, two nineteen thirty-nine Chris Craft, it's a seventeen-foot runabout for myself. It's gonna be difficult, George, but you need to define.
I'm gonna move on to my next question.
Mr. Chair, could I just address one thing on that?
Is it directly related to George?
It is, and I, I certainly don't mean to interrupt, uh, Mr. Seal, but I, I, I think we've got the message, but I, I also would just want to make clear my, my understanding, and if, unless anybody wants to argue differently. Again, um, Sean owns a number of boats himself personally. It's not part of the commercial application. I just want to make clear that what Mr. Seal's asking for and will certainly provide is a delineation of the areas where there's going to be storage and where the boats are being, that are being worked on, where those boats will be. But Mr.'s, Mr. Grant's personal boats are not part of this application. I, I just don't want there to be any confusion about that.
Thank you very much for that clarification.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you. I see another hand up, Cindy Werple, do you have a, uh, some things that you have to say relative to George's question?
I'm not sure, it's, uh, Ed Werple and Cindy, uh, uh, that area had been in mixed use for many years, uh, we've had property down there for many years. Uh, we have, uh, property on Red Oak Lodge Road now that's right across from, uh, Sean's operation and, uh, we're not having any problems with this at all.
All right, thank you. I, I, I saw your hand up and you may have missed we talked about, uh,
Yeah, no, we were, I'm sorry, but, uh, we had, uh, I'm a pastor and we had a Bible study until late, we just got in late and we were just trying to come in.
Okay, thank you. So we will take, um, comments from the butters at another time. We're going through a process now where the board has questions for the applicant, so that's, that's thank you. Back to you, George.
So a, a follow-up question, um, the photos from the site visit showed, um, boats and trailers being stored and undercover, uh, plastic covers to, on the property east of what's shown on the site plan, it, it's labeled the, uh, Bellevance parcel. Uh, and my question is, is that part of your boat storage operation or is that somebody owned by somebody else and, and operated by somebody else?
George, there, I assume you're referring to the one directly to the east?
Correct.
Yes, I do rent that garage, I have three boats stored inside of it. And I worked a deal with the, uh, new owner, Mr. Cook, he said, I asked if I could stick a couple of boats in the driveway. He said, keep the driveway plowed, no problem.
Okay, in that
Three boats stored outside, three inside.
Correct. All right, so I think, uh, in follow-up to the prior discussion, that will need to be added to the application, including the site plan and the stormwater and phosphorus control calculations. Because you're adding impervious area.
Uh, no, we're not adding impervious area, we're parked on top of gravel driveways. It's not adding, they're, they're already gravelled, they already are impervious. But are you saying, what about the inside storage? So, because moving them off the parking lot is not an issue. Are you saying I can't rent my neighbor's garage and put any boats in there as well without asking you a permission?
It, yes, because that's part of your, i- if it's part of this application, that's correct.
I, I don't know, I'm asking you, is it part of my
Fine, but that's your option, you could move those boats and, and thereby avoid the issue.
Go on.
Thank you.
Welcome.
It, it's just, again, I'm not, it isn't that I'm questioning how you're operating, I'm questioning what we're being asked to approve. And, you know, I'm not
I totally understand.
I'm not gonna be issuing a blank check on, on, in terms of my vote.
George, I wouldn't even assume you're gonna vote for me.
So, next question?
Next question is, um, has to do with, uh, stormwater, um, the application and, and again, Mr. Allen, please correct me if this has been addressed in, in the newest version. But the February, um, fourth application indicates you will be applying to D E P for stormwater management and phosphorus control permit, um, that was, that's a fairly major change from the first application. Phosphorus control permit. Um, that was, that's a fairly major change from the first application submitted. My question is, uh, is that stormwater permit that you'll be applying for, for the overall site? Um, and do you, is it your desire that that permit, uh, be, um, accepted by this board in lieu of submitting an additional stormwater and phosphorus control plan to the town?
No, uh, actually, we're not submitting an application to DEP for stormwater per- permit. Uh, we have submitted strong, uh, phosphorus calculations, uh, uh, in the application that we provided, uh, that show how we're gonna meet that. And again, that's part of that fifty-five hundred square foot area that we're revegetating and the twelve hundred square foot area out back. Where the, uh, gravel area is there. Yeah, that, that was covered in the new application.
Okay, so that's clarified in the new application.
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
The, uh, so that, that brings me to, um, a series of questions with regard to what has been, was submitted in the February third application for a stormwater management plan and a phosphorus control plan. The, um. What would, so the, the, the whole approach hinges on, uh, the installation, the construction and installation of, um, a, uh, engineered or, or reinforced turf, uh, surface, uh, which is plastic. Um, the, uh, the, uh, February third, uh, February fourth, that, um, plan has very little in the way of detail on how that will be, uh, designed, installed. Um, any specifics about how it will be designed to manage phosphorus? Um, uh, for example, there is no, um, manufacturer installation specs included or, uh, things of that nature, and I'm wondering if that's now in the new application.
We talk about that some in the new application, and in fact, we discussed it some at the February eighteen meeting. Uh, we're planning on putting the same sort of surface in that they use over where you have the farmer's market in the summer. Uh, that's reinforced turf, uh, in behind the building, if you remember that discussion, sir. They, um, what it is, is basically putting loam on top of gravel. And you, uh, when they did that, they did not, uh, include a, a plastic reinforcing mesh. I've gotta look at that and see, uh, a little bit more if, you know, if that would suit our needs. Uh, but what I'm, I don't have any, uh, additional details for that, because you hadn't asked for any. And, um, up until this point. And so, um, yeah, I can provide some, some information from the manufacturer, uh, li- looking at a Geo Web, Geo Web pa- package, uh, I think Tensar is the manufacturer that I was planning on using. But if we can, uh, obtain a suitable surface that we can move boats on to and off of, uh, we can do something like they do at the, uh, at the, uh, farmer's market area.
The, the reason I ask is, um, because of those that are available on the market, some are designed for interim use. Some are designed for full-time use for parking vehicles or, and I just want to be sure that what we're being asked to approve is really suitable for the purpose that you intend.
Yeah.
Um, and in fact, you know, won't be a constant maintenance headache, because you've already submitted a maintenance and operation plan that calls for annual inspections and repairs if necessary.
Right. I think that's with any sort of product that's being depended on for water quality treatment, for phosphorus treatment. I think it's good to have somebody look at it every year, just to make sure that it's still functioning properly.
Will, will that require, uh, a manufacturer certified installer?
No, it would, it could be inspected by an engineer.
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean the inspection. I meant the actual installation.
No, that could be installed by a contractor, uh, like they do on, you know, projects all over the state.
So the, you know, just obviously of my question is, uh, I feel like I need to see, speaking for myself, more details on precisely how that's gonna be designed and installed to accomplish the stormwater management and phosphorus control, um, objectives that you've already laid out, including in the phosphorus budget.
Okay.
There, there's no, for example, there's no cross-section detailed drawing or anything that I've seen today.
Right. I, I have not submitted anything like that, because not, no one's asked for it. So, yeah, that's, it's very easy to provide that. Uh, I, actually, I may use the same detail that was submitted for the other project in town.
Thank you. Um, the, um, my next question has to do with, um, i- i- it's sort of the same, uh, issues that Rich Baker had, uh, asked about. And, and Sean, thank you for the clarification that one of the fifty-five-degallon drums is waste gasoline, which, as you probably know, is classified as a hazardous waste by US EPA and State of Maine. Uh, and the second is waste oil. Um, the photo taken, the photos provided by Mr. Allen, Mr. Allen, your photo, as well as the photos taken during the site visit, um, indicate that it's only labeled as waste oil in terms of the signage. Is there a reason for that? And the, I'm just thinking of first responders coming to a fire there and, and, um, not necessarily knowing that there's gasoline there in addition to the waste oil.
Uh, there was no, no, uh, no intent to do anything that wasn't being required. I assumed it was accurate, because as, as the Grants have said, uh, DEP has been on site several times and looked at this and, and gave it their blessing. Uh, it is labeled on the side, and we also have a letter from the, uh, Fire Chief saying that he has no problems. So I think the, at least the Fire Chief is aware that it's there. And, um, you know, shouldn't, should an emergency happen, uh, certainly the Fire Chief would be involved with, uh, something like that.
Okay, thank you. Um, with regard to the proper disposal of the waste oil and, and the waste gasoline, and as I said, waste gasoline is defined because by characteristic as a hazardous waste under, uh, the states and, and the federal recr- uh, regulations. The, um, what are, it would be helpful if we had, um, confirmation of that of the names or, uh, of the firms that are licensed by the state for, uh, their transport and where that waste goes. For example, does it go to a licensed facility like Clean Harbors in South Portland? Or one of the facilities in Portsmouth, New Hampshire or Boston? Uh, so we know it isn't, you know.
Right.
Would somewhere.
Yeah, I believe Mr. Grant has a contract with Clean Harbors, and they service the facility as needed, uh, when he has a full, uh, container or something that he wants to get rid of, he'll give them a call. They come and pick it up.
That'd be great.
Excuse me, Cyn Energy, C Y N Energy.
And they're licensed by Maine DEP?
Oh, most definitely. They're the biggest in the Northeast. They take our gas and oil. I say not all, always the oil. The oil sometimes will go to local shops for, uh, waste oil burners.
Mm-hmm. Okay, well, if the application could reflect that, that'd be helpful. The, um, I didn't see that company's name on DEP's list of, uh, licensed, uh, waste oil, uh, transporters, uh, when I looked it up, but, um, that list is also a little out of date.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm ninety-nine percent sure they are. They're the only ones that'll handle gasoline.
So if that information could be added to the application, so that we have it in writing, that'd be helpful.
Certainly.
Um. I take it from the new application that washing of boats has now been included in the application where it was not before. Um, could you speak a little bit, Mr. Allen, about, uh, how the wastewater generated by that is, um, managed and, and prevented from reaching the drainage way along the east property line? And whether or not that requires a discharge license from DEP?
Right, um, first of all, it does not require a license. I spoke, uh, at length with John Hopek, who's the, uh, and, and there's some email correspondence as well, um, a geologist for the State of Maine. And he said for, for washing the boats, um, this is something that could be done. Uh, and we're looking at doing it back on this area where we're reinforcing the turf, uh, and creating a small depression there. That way, water coming off the boats would not wash off, but would be infiltrated. Um, you know, yes, keeping it on-site is, is the intent of that design or in that, uh, goal. So, yeah, it, it won't be going off. We also quantified roughly the number of boats that are washed as being, maybe it was twenty-five percent of, of boats you had there. Um, you know, over the course of a year, so it might be, you know, two or three boats per week, which certainly is, is, uh, given the geography or geology, I'm sorry, that, uh, Mr. Hopek spoke of, uh, something that could be infiltrated and would be a, you know, would not cause runoff. So, yeah, they, they're, the intent is to keep all of that washwater on-site. Uh, and again, a lot of it's just done with pressure water, uh, pressure washing water, I'm sorry, to, uh, to clean those boats.
Well, as you probably would guess, a lot of times that washwater also includes a fair amount of oil and grease and, and petroleum, uh, products, uh, in addition to the detergent and surfactant. So that, hence my, the reason for my question, but my basic.
Washing the, the interior of the boat. I think the washing is just of the hull. So those hull, that would be the hull that's been sitting in the, the lake all summer and just would be, you know, have biological growth on there, algae. Uh, and I don't, I don't believe they're talking about washing the inside of the boat, uh, that would, you know, include bilge water.
We would never pressure wash an oily bilge onto the ground. That'd be ridiculous. Um, we would wipe it out with pig mats, get the oil out of there before we ever clean the inside. But again, that's a really rare occasion for us to, uh, to pressure wash the inside of a boat, except when we're getting ready to restore it possibly. But as far as, you know, the guys that are coming out of the lake in the fall, we're just getting the slime off the bottom and shipping them.
Very good, thank you. Um, so, Mr. Allen, um, is the, uh, uh, modifications to the, uh, the, uh, for the area, the area designated for boat washing and, and any modifications to it? Are those already shown on the new site plan?
No, because the, all the discussions we've talked about boat washing have been subsequent to the, when we filed the latest application. Uh, this is a new, relatively new, um, change that, uh, that we're going to incorporate into the site. But again, we're gonna be submitting a new site plan. This is something that we can include.
Thank you. Um. Uh, my next question, um, uh, has to do with the parking, uh, and specifically the two parking spaces shown on the site drawing as, uh, being directly accessible from the Hulan Road and are located in the town right of a way. I would just point out that the ordinance specifically prohibits both of those in that location. And I would suggest you take a look at maybe an alternate way of, uh, orienting that. So it was no longer in the town right of way and didn't provide, uh, direct access to the Hulan Road, because that's something we can't approve.
Okay, you're speaking of the, the two that are immediately in front of the shop?
Um, I think they're.
Is that, that?
The, on the site plan I have, they're shown in front of the office.
Yeah.
And they, the others are, are parallel to the Hulan Road, so.
These ones are perpendicular to Hulan Road.
Yeah, right, so that, you know, people are gonna be accessing those by backing out or, or coming directly on and off of the Hulan Road. And that's not allowed by the, uh, our ordinance, uh, in the parking standards specifically. And also, parking's not allowed in the town right of way.
Yeah, I, I'm showing it entirely on property, I believe.
The town has a right of way down on Hulan of twenty feet. It is not a standard width street, and I don't let anything go within three feet. Right now, there's thirteen-six of, uh, hot top out there. You take out the other twenty, as long as I stay three plus feet on the other side, I'm out of the towns right away.
If that's true, that's great.
It is true.
But I'm, I'm, um, then we still have a problem with the way the, uh, people access those parking spaces. It, it can't be directly from the Hulan Road.
So if I.
It has to be off-street parking.
Okay, so if I had rotated them ninety degrees so that they would be, um, parallel to Hu- Hulan Road, that'd be okay?
Yes.
Okay, done. But I still think people will probably park the way they have for many years. But I can, I can show that as, as corrected.
And my la- my last question, um, for now, is, um, in the application, and, and maybe this has already been addressed in the new application again, and I, again, apologize for redundancy. But, um, the, uh, question thirty-six, um, with regard to meeting the noise standards, uh, that, your response or your answer to that is that, um, it does meet the noise standards? And, and I wondered what the basis of that answer is.
It must, I meet the, uh, the noise standards, because, um, you know, what I, they don't have the activities outside that I know of. All, all the activities as far as, uh, doing work on the, the, um, boats is in the shop. And so, you know, there's not very little outside to be, that would generate noise that I can.
So a noise survey or something comparable has not been conducted today?
It has not.
All right, thank you. That answers my question. Peter, that's all, all the questions I have for now.
Thanks, George. And so, um, let's see, I'm looking at other planning board members before we go anywhere else. Uh, Mac, previously you had your hand up for a question. Did you want to ask that at this time?
No, just follow up later.
Okay, all right, thanks. Um, and from my perspective, I know, um, I had some questions, I think, really about, about stuff that was found, um, in the site as a result of the onsite, um, visit. But I think both Rich and George have asked those, so I think I'm good for the moment. Um, so, before moving on, I just want to check, are there any other questions from the planning board um, of the applicant at this time?
Well.
Okay, thanks, Pete, George, Craig, Mac, Rich. I think we're in a good spot there. Let's move on to the, to the next part. Um, the next part, uh, of this would be questions and comments by Abutters and other interested parties. Um, the way we've said it here is that questions of the applicant will be made through the chair. So I think, I'm trying to think about logistics here. Some person has a question or a comment, please raise your hand, and I'll try to navigate this and, uh, select, uh, the person and then comment and say, so and so, so and so, I see your hand is raised. Would you like to have a comment? And, uh, so this is where I'm looking for questions and comments by Abutters and other interested parties.
Peter, um, I don't know that Terry Turhune has access to the digital raise your hand button, but he seems to be waving his hand pretty furiously right now.
All right, so, thank you, Anthony, and, um, and so, Mr. Terhune, I know that you're muted. Um, and perhaps you, you would need assistance. There we go. So while we're waiting to do that, um, I would, uh, reiterate the fact that we want to remain, um, reach to the point if possible, so.
Okay, he's up.
Thank you.
I don't know how to get that back. Oh, here we go.
But, yep, yep.
Am I on the air?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I would, my name is Terry Turhune, and I live. At the end of Red Oak Lodge Road. Where there used to be the the old Red Oak Lodge Inn. And I believe that you've gotten some pictures that I sent out that show that. Old road or that the road and. The Red Oak Lodge itself before it burned down in the thirties and then in the forties. And it was given a right of way in nineteen oh seven. And was deeded to that piece of property that's back there, which was about five acres. And had housed not only the lodge, but a eating area and a barn and a couple of other side camps. Now, subsequent to that, it was had met a Hulan Road. Which was a private right of way at that time. And the village took over. The Hulan Road, which was a private right of way, like I said, and then it took over Red Oak Lodge Road up to Durn Road. And that plows there and takes the responsibility of it, and then from there on, it's growl. And it's been the responsibility of that same four or five acres that were back there where the Red Oak Lodge Road was. Now, well, those people have been responsible for all these years since the nineteen forty's burned down. To maintain that road. And they've done that with the help of the BLA who came in. And to make sure that the road was proper and they even offered a fifty fifty. You pay, they pay grant from the through the VLA through the state and had some state people come down and make sure that we. Laid it all right and they put in a new covert. And so on, and since then, we've been maintaining the road. Now. I think you also see a picture of Sir Richard's place on the lake and a picture of our place in the lake. And my daughter has a buildable lot right next to mine. And then there's another place that you see a camp on the Red Oak Lodge on the right of way. That's a camp on the left-hand side, and on the right-hand side is. The old health center property. And that gives you an idea of kind of how close that. That. Home is and how wide the road is, which is somewhere between twelve and fifteen feet, sometimes as low as eight. And our concern mostly with the people that are back there, living there are concerned with that road. For the maintenance of it and the care and feeding of it, but also for the fact that we now abut that road. And that, from what I understand, is that would be in the sort of the center of the road, the abutment. And we're concerned with the fact that we do not know until we got some more knowledge just recently on. How much of that area that used to be the. The health center is going to be used for boat storage. And if that's going to be boat storage and maintained in the manner that it is currently. Being maintained and and used, then we have some issues that we would like to go address. And those are the most serious issues. And that some of it was discussed earlier by you by the board that said that we do not know just what's going to go on out there as far as structures and boats. And what what is going to be defined as a usable area for storing boats. Yeah, so we would like to address the fact that we're not sure of just exactly what that's going to look like. And we're concerned because the visibility of that and the. Vision that you see as you're driving up that road. Is kind of appalling, and we feel that it's going to degrade the value in any of the properties that are back there. Plus the fact that it is so small. For any heavy traffic, frequent traffic. That that's going to go put. A burden on us that we don't not looking forward to. So we would like to see someone take and look at the. The. The twenty fourteen comprehensive plan. I think page one oh six calls out the abutting between a commercial and. Residential. And it calls out screen screening and it calls out distancing. From the center of the road, et cetera, et cetera, and none of that has been addressed, most of the stuff. That's been addressed as we see it. But we're, we apologize, we interrupted early on because we were not aware of how business was done. With these with your planning board. But it turns out that we have heard more about the area that used to be the. Area that we're concerned with. Tonight, and we find out that we have reasonably concern because it's not really that identified. And we feel that somewhere they ought to address that abutment because it should be screened. And it should be distanced, and it should not be an access. For multiple boats to come out and or trailers to be parked in a drainage that was developed. With the pitch of the of the road by the state. So that gives us our concern, and that's why we are monitoring this closely to make sure that. You are aware of there are live people living back there in that corner of the woods. And I thank you.
Mr. Terry Hune, thank you very much for your comments, I appreciate them. As you were speaking, I think I saw Mr. Allen maybe taking some notes and so on, maybe maybe to help address some of those. Concerns and statements that were presented. Maybe, I don't know, Jeff, give me a nod, either yes or no, yeah, okay, great. Because we probably won't be able to address all of those things tonight in in this one single meeting, but I just want to make sure we. Can loop back to them at the appropriate time, but what you know that you heard. I did want to take just one quick moment to to. To state that the comprehensive plan is simply a plan, right? It's not the ordinance and the ordinance or the ordinances of the town that we have. This planning board operates with the comprehensive plan in mind, but. Has to go by the ordinances that we have. So I just wanted to sort of make a distinction there about Ethan, what doesn't, so.
So the plan, from what you're saying to me is the plan is not. It's a plan, it's not an implementation methodology. Or methodization.
Pretty close.
It's not something that's taken into consideration for the care and feeding of the environment around it?
It it is, and what what the town is doing is using features and goals of the comprehensive plan. Going forward, then revising ordinances to align where possible. Any of those types of suggestions to make ordinances that don't have those things in mind. Have them in mind, then present those to the townsfolk to vote on as a revised. So it does take some time. But I just wanted to make sure to distinguish between. What we have to operate with today versus the overarching goals of the of the comprehensive plan.
Well, so then we we actually are at the at the at the whim of whoever wants to go develop. By virtue of trying to negotiate or plead with them that they put up screening or they do something. From between the commercial and the residential to make it palatable. For people to live in the same environment and in the same area.
We would, we would have the guidelines as offered in the current ordinance for for those screening methods that are in place.
Well, you hear our complaint and our opinion and or at least mine. And so I guess that's about all I can do is just let you know what I think is our problem.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate what you've said. So going on from from Mr. Terry Hune. The next hand that I saw up, it looks like comes from Monica Schuler, forgive me if I've not. Nounced that correct.
First of all, I want to thank you for having this hearing. Thank you for the presentation, thank you for the questions. I do have a few questions, but my first question has to do with our well, so for the folks that don't know us. My name is Monica Schuler, I'm married to Dennis Lavoy, and we own the little cabin on thirty-two Red Oaks Lodge Road. We have a well that abuts that is on our property that abuts the Red Oaks Lodge Road. And the road that both we and Sean Grant own. My concern is with the expansion of the project as Sean is proposing. And the plethora of chemicals that we saw in the photos. I'm very concerned about the potential for contaminating our well and impacting our drinking water and. And our use, so that is my overarching question at this moment, and I'll defer and listen to what the board has to say. Or the response.
So that's Monica, I'm sorry, was that addressed to the board or to the applicant?
Oh, forgive me, that is addressed to both the board and the applicant, I'm wondering if there's been any consideration given to. The impact of any potential runoff from the chemicals and or even from washing the boats or anything else that's going on. On surrounding well water, I mean, there is the issue and the concern of. Certainly, first and foremost, the stream, but I have a well that is right on the road. That's the way we bought the property, that's that's where it is, and I'm very, very worried that anything that Mr. Grant. Does on that property might impact the quality of my water, I think I have a right to have clean water. So that's a big concern, and I, by the way, I apologize for the noise in the background. My granddaughter is running around taking a bath and all that. Anyway, it's just, it's real world stuff going on.
Monica, you're probably fifteen to twenty feet higher in elevation than where my shop is. It would be nearly impossible for me to pour enough gallons into this ground to run uphill to your property. With less than a hundred gallons worth of hazardous materials on hand at any one given time. And again, if you look at your site versus where we operate, topographically, that is a physical impossibility.
At the moment, yes, I agree with you, you are down from us.
Exactly.
My concern is what it is that you are proposing to do. You are, forgive me, my interpretation, and I'm not, I'm not a planner, I'm not an attorney. I am a nurse.
Sure, well, then why don't I just?
And then, please let me finish, sir. So what you are proposing is somewhat vague. You are, we are hearing from you, sir, that you want to expand your business because you're being forced to do so. You have, you're being, you're asking to develop and or start this new business. Boat storage and or cleaning and so forth and so on, and with that comes material, comes. Gas comes oil comes runoff, and when you develop your new facility. On the property abutting mine. There is that risk of runoff, I don't know if you're going to have a building fifteen feet from me. You haven't demonstrated any of that, all I do know is that when I when I drive up that road. I see that quote unquote big shed, but I don't know if that's going to be part of the. The landscape and or contributing to runoff. I just, I'm concerned that runoff and contamination of wells and or stream. And lake has not been addressed, that's my.
Monica, we are asking to develop nothing, we're not asking to put more gravel down, we're not asking to build a building. We're not asking for any development, as a matter of fact, we are going to see back fifty-five hundred feet of impervious. To meet the prosperous runoffs that the DEP regulation say we need to do, that's all. You are winding up in a better situation than currently.
So we, I would add that, can I can I add to that as an applicant too? You absolutely, Monica, you absolutely have the right to ask that question, and I I understand completely. And and. The reality is, if if there were any additional development requests, any buildings, anything else. That would have to come back to the planning board for another review, and that's not what we're asking for. We were asked by the town to convert what we are doing to a commercial application and. And and so I understand that, but DEP has been out. We have a stormwater plan, Jen Jesperson has been involved, we've involved the people that pick up hazardous materials. So all of that has been reviewed and. Considered, and we're operating within protocol, the amount of materials that we have on hand and the capacity that we have. Given our current footprint is is. In no way is going to drastically increase at this time, we're not asking for new buildings at this point, we're not asking for. Anything different than what we're doing, the the sticking points.
Appreciate, and I appreciate, I appreciate that explanation, but what I see. When I come, when I come to my cabin in Maine, is I see a number of junk carts, I see. Old tractors that are, you know, oil containers. I see that this area that you have cleared, and apparently you've done it legally, so you know, I'm not quanding there at all. But I see that that area is currently being filled with junk, I see that. And forgive me, I I respect that you love old boats, I love old boats too. But when I see a tractor, when I, let me, please let me finish, when I see an old tractor with wheels that are all rusted or are all. Dilapidated, when I see. I looked at the photos that Mr. Anthony and I forgot, Mr. Fuller presented. And I see these junk piles, forgive me, that's junk, that is not contributing to. To good groundwater, that is not, like, I worry about what you might throw in there, forgive me, I'm just trying to protect.
Nobody's gonna throw. We can't even.
You're you're going off the rails here, number one, the tractor out there is junk, but the oils that were drained out of it before it was ever moved out there. It wasn't junk when it went, I had it up on my tractor, one wheel came up over a rock. The strap that was holding it snapped, it flipped over, landed upside down, and yes, now it's junk. Those boats out there, you can call them what you will, but there's not a single one that is junk, there are antique collectors all over this country. They would buy those house from me, I'm waiting for the right buyers and to be able to capitalize on my restoration services with their sales.
And I respect that, I respect.
Junk is, I'm sorry, but you can't call what I love and what I own junk and expect me to not.
Okay, okay, you know what, I I will, I will take that, however, if your collector's item. Is leaking into the groundwater and potentially contaminating my water, then yes, I'm going to call it. And if I if I mistakenly call it junk, when perhaps I should name it something else, I'm happy to do so. But my interest at the moment with this single request is have you or has the.
Monica, I'm a responsible businessman, we drain oil before we park boats.
Implications of any of your runoff or any of the runoff associated with. What you are currently doing with the land and or what you may propose to do with the land. What it will, what impact it will have, not only on my well, but anyone else around me, I'm just asking, I'm just asking, please. Just address it, if you address it, I'll be happy, just address it.
Excuse me, Monica, this is where I have to break in here, so. Want to get back to the original point, I think what you had was a question about. The process that we're going through and what the applicant is applying for. I wanted to address that and say that we had clarifying questions. Early, which you may have heard, to talk about asking the applicant to present. In writing to us so that we we either, we will act on what isn't presented. So if something is approved, only that is approved. Okay, so and it's a pretty thorough, we think. Process, so. Let's see, I want to go on next one, next person.
Can I jump in real quick, Peter?
Uh, yes, Sean.
I believe the requirement that, you know, the the you specified it was five minutes per person?
Yeah.
Boy, we're running way over that, I'm seeing your time.
I do, thank you, I do want to move along and. You're muted.
Hey, Peter.
Yep.
Can we get back to the procedures we laid out and have the applicant hold off on their rebuttal until such time, it's their time? It's their time to do so.
Okay, good. We'll do that. And a clarifying comment here. Questions and comments by butters, right? Hold to five minutes. And I would look for the applicant and Mr. Allen to take notes to be able to respond to those things at some other time. Otherwise, we'll be here all night and we just can't. So next up I saw was Ethan Huntington. Ethan, did you have a question or a comment?
I apologize. You just said a butters only. I, I am an interested party, but I'm not in a butter.
This is, this is for a butters and interested parties.
Okay, yeah, I did though. Okay, so I think that it is a, I mean, maybe I'm not fully versed in the whole situation here, but I think it is important that we have employers in the area that are year round that actually perform a service for people in the summer because that is our economic impetus comes from. I really, I appreciate the services that Sean provides, the Bright Side Marina. I think that it's, I think it's important to have it there. I take the points about groundwater. That is very much something that I am worried about. And I've been impressed by at least Sean's, if not, like I've stored boats in other places. I think it's, it's a hard thing to have to deal with. And I am impressed by his attention to it. I think one of the things that the last respondent had to talk about was the oil that was in the boats. And as Sean said, draining the oil, that's a big, important part of storing a boat. I do think that the groundwater needs to be taken into account. And I do think that since the application really only deals with what was applied for, if anything goes wrong or if he overextends, then that's something else. I think overall, I very much think that the application should be accepted. I guess that my entire comment, I hope that that goes over well. Thank you.
Thanks, Ethan, for your, for your comments. I think next up I had Susan Terhune, I think was in order. Susan?
Hi. Thank you all for this. It's been, it's been an interesting process. I think that my approach, and I have had this conversation with other people. I'm kind of a big picture person. I don't really get into a lot of the details. And what I see, having been living in that home for the last 23 years, and understanding that you came up with a comprehensive plan, I think that it's important to realize that the comprehensive plan is not all encompassing and that things are going to come up that don't make sense. My concern is that we have a neighborhood that is a neighborhood. And we don't know what the commercial magnitude of this could be, or if they sold the commercial land to someone else, what that could do to the particular area. And most importantly, I look at the fact that the, that the community has put so much money into the downtown to make it attractive to tourists and to summer residents, that there has been so much happening that this needs to be considered as an understanding what the potential impact is for the neighborhood as it grows and what it does to our neighborhood, but also downtown. And does the downtown area have the capacity to handle all this? I think about the long term and what the potentials are. And, you know, for me, being a neighbor there, I mean, I, I feel very strongly that Sean is not a good neighbor, that we have had lots of situations. We're uncomfortable, all of us who are questioning and asking for the junkyard to be. And I know he doesn't like junk. But it's a real concern. The fact that we drive down a road and we want to relax and enjoy our time there in our regular homes or summer homes, to be met with someone with the amount of hostility that he has is not fun. And I think that there, there has to be consideration for the fact that I don't, I personally do not trust that when he says he's going to do something, that he's actually going to do it. I don't feel that it's been proven. Those sheds have been there for a long time. He's not, he's not a good neighbor. And I'm not trying to go, I know this isn't part of the application, but if there could be a rebuilding of the trust and actual understanding, I don't want to be the Sean police for the next 20, 30 years. I don't want to do it. There needs to be an understanding that what actually is applied for is monitored and respected and that there's some respect for the neighbors. That's all I'm asking for is just to, I don't need to walk by and have somebody shooting birds at me and calling at my 90-year-old father. So it's just, it's not okay. It's upsetting to us. And I think if there was an attempt to become a good neighbor, that there could be a lot more cooperation with everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I think what I saw was, I think it was Sam Spring. What, what show, Sam Spring with a hand up and then Cody.
How's it going? Um, I have a couple of questions. I know earlier George had some questions and Jeff rebuked those, saying that there's adjustments to the application. But the application that I saw next to the Zoom meeting link didn't have any of the stuff that Jeff was mentioning. So is that going to be available to the public soon? Or is that going to be added later? When can we see that? I know one of the questions was the question 16 and that kind of changes the whole scope of the operation. So I just kind of want to understand these confusions before we kind of go further along into the process.
Okay, yes, thanks. And I know that that's a, the applicants presented that apparently to the town. And I think we just need to make sure that those things are published. And then that way everybody can see them. And the planning board would have that newest updated application in front of us as well.
Peter, I may be able to speak to that just for a second. We, we posted notice of this hearing on March the first. And at that time, we posted the application as it was in that form. So we will make sure that we update that on the website tomorrow. So anyone who wants to see it can go to townofbelgrade.com/planningboard.
Thank you, Anthony. And I'd like to move along to the next one, which is Cody. And then after Cody, I see Stacy Richard. So Cody?
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Kristen Cody. And I guess, you know, there are, there's a couple of things. First of all, I do agree with the fact that the town needs this period. They just, it's something that the town does need to have this service, the services that Bright Side provides available to the amount of tourists that you want to come in to see your very nice village area that has been all redone over the last year and a half. My family and I have lived next to Sean for the last two years, two and a half years. We were a butters and there was no issues. Our well literally lines right up with his property. And there was no issues with our water or anything like that. A commercial permit. I mean, yes, I think maybe the importance of looking at that, what that means in the future. But at the same time, you know, the healing road is part of the village technically. So the fact that some of these homes are, are going to be converted into commercial businesses or what have you, or permits, just like several of the homes that were right on the main street is no surprise. The town is growing. The amount of people and tourists that we have there is growing. I don't know if anybody pays attention to real estate in that town, but I mean, stuff is moving quickly. It has to grow in order to remain stable. So it's not changing anything that currently exists with what he and his business is currently doing. So other than the shed mess, which I don't know, put up effects to solve that problem and make your neighbors happy. But other than that, we had no issues. There was, there was no issues with that business that complicated or inconvenienced our lives in any way if we were right next door to him. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Stacy Richard, I think you're next. And then after you, we have, so Stacy.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Hi, I'm Stacy. My husband Jared and I own 48 Red Oaks Lodge Road. And if you're looking at a tax map, it's a 25055A. Our right of way goes through the Schuler-Lavoy property and then through the Terhune property. So we have to drive by the discarded boats, the boat parts, the trailers, the burn piles, the camper, two sheds. It just seems to add every year the collection of stuff that's across from the Schuler-Lavoy property. And that's the core issue for us. That's what has sparked our interest in this permit. If we were just talking about the one, two acre parcel that is the homestead application, we would have no issues with this at all. We have no issues with Sean's business, with Sean's livelihood. That's not our issue. We are just trying to protect our property, our investment and our interest in the lakes. So our core problem right now, it boils down to two things. And both of them are just confusion. Um, Mr. Grant has said that the burden is on him to complete this application based on what the town and the Superior Court agreed upon. But that, from my understanding, is just to okay the current commercial business uses. However, this application identifies 11 acres. This application.
Pardon me, I just wanted to make sure Cody has, she has muted. I'm sorry. So go ahead.
No problem. Um, I think the application identifies 11 acres to be commercialized. And to me, that's a huge, an excessive amount of land. And I don't really see anything that shows what's going to happen. For example, Max Stucko identified the sheds that are not on the plan and the boats that are not on the plan and that there's boat storage over here, yet there's boat storage over there. It's just confusing to us. So if we could identify more of exactly what is being asked to be permitted, that would help us. And then my second concern is about the stormwater runoff. And I think what Monica Schuler said has a lot of merit. She does have a well. It's an underground well, whether her property is higher or not. It's a 100, 200 foot well. There's stuff that can drain into there. And my question is why there's not a stormwater drain system that's being considered? I know at the February 18th meeting, somebody had discussed that Mr. Grant could qualify as a small quantity hazardous waste generator. But I don't believe that he is, just based on the sheer amount of boats that he services in winterizes. So I would propose that we could look into, or they could look into some sort of stormwater management, something with a concrete basin, something with an oil-water separator, something that has a huge catch basin where the oil is saved, something like a bay saver or a vortex system. Those are really common systems used in Connecticut, especially around our rivers. You have to catch that oil and prevent it from going into the lakes. And he specifically, where his business is right now, is 150, maybe, if you're generous, 200 feet from the stream, which then flows into Long Pond, which flows into Mesulon ski. So we're talking about a potential for a lot of hazardous waste. And then my husband, who owns a steel manufacturing company and has worked with diesel engines in his company, has a couple of things just to say about lead in the engines that are also a concern for our wells and our properties.
Yeah, so regarding Sean's area on Red Oaks Lodge Road, has his personal property, which I guess exempts it from the commercial aspect, fine. But I'd like to point out that those old engines, like from the 50s, 40s, 30s, those are chock full of lead, liquefied lead from the old days. We had, you know, lead in the gas. And those are like right on top of Monica's well. So I mean, you can drain the oil out of the oil pan and think it's safe. But anyone that's worked on an old engine like that, I've done several. You pull off the pan, you're going to find two inches of this nasty liquefied tetra ethyl lead. That stuff is so deadly, so dangerous. They banned it in the 1970s. So that's going to get in the groundwater and it's not going to go away. So I'd like that looked at. So that's, that's my two cents.
Thank you for hearing us.
Thank you very much. So I'm seeing a hand raised by Bright Side. We're not going into rebuttals at this time, right? We're trying to get questions from each of the butters and other interested parties. So if we get through it, there'll be a time where you can have some, some chance to say something. Okay. Because other people have their hand up. I just want to make sure we get to them because it's running late. So Rick, you're next.
There we go. Rick Strobel, I live on, on Dern Lane, 13 Dern Lane. And my property does, but the Red Oaks passageway. I guess I have some particular, not overview type comments or concerns. And correct me if I'm wrong. Did, did you say the parking was going to change that they couldn't go in in the direction on Hoolan Road? So now all traffic will go in by Red Oaks Road? Is that correct?
That, that was not what I heard.
It had to do with the angle of the cars. So therefore they couldn't back in from what the town ordinance was.
Right. So let, just get a clarifying comment and we'll be brief. Jeff, you just quickly remark.
Yeah, the, the plan that I had submitted shows the cars driving in from Red Oak Road and parking in front of the office in a couple of spaces there. What Mr. Seal pointed out is that's not legal. And so the cars will have to come into the driveway and then turn right to park into those spaces. So the only entrance will be on through the driveway. I'm not sure exactly how this is accomplished and how this has been changed over the years. But that's, that's how I understand it.
Thank you. And Rick, back to your comments. We're trying to keep this succinct.
Thank, thank you. Um, so though it's, what I'm hearing then is there'll be no entrance from Red Oaks Road, correct?
I'll respond. The only way to get into the site is on Hoolan Road. To my knowledge, Red Oak Road does not connect back to the main road. So you have to go through Hoolan to get to Red Oak.
But currently boats are being backed in there for storage. And if that's fine, it's fine. I'm just curious how Red Oaks is going to be affected by more traffic going through there.
I don't believe there will be more traffic there, but I.
Maybe chew on that, Jeff, a little bit or think about it.
Okay. This, thank you, sir.
Another, another question is, at one of the past meetings, they talked about, I think Sean had mentioned that there was property under contract to add or be included in the 11 acres. Correct me if I'm wrong. But if, if that's the case and it's not, the contract hasn't gone through, it was sort of based on this being commercial, commercialized. So if it's not gone through yet, does that mean that we're permitting or the town is permitting someone else also besides Sean? I'm curious.
Really quick, Jeff.
No, the, the applicants required to show title writer interest in a purchase and sale agreement is in fact a demonstrated means to show title writer interest. So.
Thanks, that's good.
Okay, and thank you. And one, one other thing is that you mentioned, or it was mentioned that the boats are private boats and not to be considered commercial boats. But then I, I hear that one, one person's junk is another person's treasure. And I understand that there's buyers out there that might be interested in his boats that one person calls junk, he calls treasure. But wouldn't that make it commercial? And it was sort of deemed that it was personal? The 10 or 12 boats in repair or in need of repair?
It's a fair question and thank you. Is there anything else you wanted to ask at this time?
Well, I think it's been covered as far as the water. My, my well is also not far from Red Oaks either. And, and if it is an aquifer, it travels long distances. So if any contamination happens, it will affect a lot of homes. And I think that's about it. Oh, future structures. Is there anything to stop future structures or is there a new application? And, and I understand that he's a good businessman. He looks to expand his business. What does it look like in five years? What does it look like in five years? Is he gonna have, um, another, you know, repair shop there or a storage facility? Uh, what, what is actually being? I'm not clear on what's being deemed, uh, what you guys are addressing. Or is it all pavement? Is it all gonna be just flat pavement?
So, um, I'll be really quick when I try to answer this and then if we can get back to this during the rebuttal phase or anything like that, especially if I've missed something. But, um, we've tried to ask the clarifying questions of the applicants because process is to, um, if it is to be approved, it is to prove, approve whatever's on paper and that's supposed to match what's on the ground. So anything, future buildings or whatever would be a future, uh, visit to the plant.
Okay, thank you. And so what's on the ground now doesn't match necessarily all what's on the site plan or what? It seems like two different things.
And that's why we, we've talked to the applicants and have, have asked them to supply that information and, um, I, I believe that, that some of it has been addressed in the more recent, um, application that was submitted. But after tonight's discussion, I think that the applicants have, have a little bit more to, to do on that. So, does that help you?
Yeah, yeah, it does. And thank you for the time. And I think it's wonderful that we can have a connecting meeting from all over the place regarding this.
Isn't it cool?
Yes, it's great.
Um, I'd like to move along and just for clarification, Sam Spring, your hand is still up. Um.
I have a few more questions. I wonder when you guys are ready.
Oh, oh, okay.
Um, I, I'm, um, Sam's sister, so I was wondering if I could address from this account.
Oh, uh, yes, you can have a question. Yeah.
Thank you. Um, my name's Olivia. My brother and I are residents of Tealun Road, and we're just been interested in what's been going on in our community. And based on what some other people have brought up, I think it's concerning that we don't actually have all the information. We don't actually know what we're fully discussing here. It seems in the past planning board meetings that there's been lots of questions and lots of answers, but then that's not actually showing on the site plan. And it's been quite frustrating to like try and keep up with what's going on. Um, and we also know that Brightside does have a history of not necessarily following all the laws and regulations. So just saying that we have their word on something isn't really like fair to the community, I feel. Um, there has been a bit of a disregard for the community and the neighbors with this ongoing development. Um, my brother and I grew up playing in the woods next to his house. Now these are very unattractive areas of the street, you know, like other people have said, there's just unattractive things around. Um, we're also quite concerned about well contamination. We have two wells on our property and we feel this hasn't really been properly addressed and and as well as the lake and water quality. So we're just overall concerned with this application. And it's, I'm all for supporting. I'd love to support local independent business. We just feel that there is some more clarification and we hope that we can receive that from the public, um, and have more discussions about it. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you for your comments and stuff. And I just wanna make sure, you may not have heard this, but we had, uh, some clarifying questions of the applicant um, that the planning board had to pre- present the information that we're, that we are requesting. So that whatever it is we act upon in front of us, should it be approved, matches what's on the ground? That's, that's a real important thing for us. So, and you may not have heard that when, if you were not here at the first of it. So, um, so your hand is still up. I'd like to move on to Haley and Hemming. I can't see your last name, Haley.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can.
Oh, right. It's Haley Hemminger. I'm resident of Belgrade. Um, I just want clarification. So if I own a personal piece of property in Belgrade and I store my own personal boat on it, someone reaches out and says, I'd like to buy this boat from you, and I sell it to them, do I then need a commercial permit to sell that boat? No, right?
I was muted there for a second. Um, I'm not aware of a requirement at all to have any kind of commercial, um.
So then Sean's boats that are his own personal property, if he sold it and that money went into his own personal account, none of those boats should have anything to do with this commercial permit, correct? I'm just making sure that I understand what you're, what you're saying. As a resident of Belgrade, who may, you know, love some other people's junk as well.
I'm, I'm not really sure what you, what you're asking, uh, cause you start off by talking about um, an individual and say boat sale, and that does not equate to a commercial business.
So if it's on his own personal property that isn't part of this application, I'm not sure what, I'm, I'm just hearing a lot of concern about this.
Okay. Yeah, let me, during that, that, at the end, I think we can maybe get back to this, cause I don't wanna lose that thought. Just wanna make sure we're clear. So let me think on it for a minute. I may lean on the other planning board members to make sure we have a thorough answer for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So I'm scanning the, the, the Brady Bunch squares to see if there are any other hands raised. Um, Rick, I see your hand up. Is, do you have another question? No? Okay. All right. Do, do you mind putting your, yeah, there you go. Thank you, sir. Right, great. Oh, and Mark Burlinger, I see you waving.
There we go. Yeah, I, I too don't know how to raise my hand electronically, so I did it physically. I have, uh, just a few questions and I don't need answers immediately. I'm also a latecomer to this. Other people have, um, information that I, that I don't. Um, I was concerned with the hours of operation. Um, is it to be daylight hours only, um, seven days a week, twenty four, or, or, uh, you know, year round or what? Uh, but I also wanted to know if, um, both sides of fuel and drive were going to be used as a commercial operation. In other words, uh, the land that's on the stream as well as the land behind Sean's house. Um, and I was concerned about the industrial traffic that is on, that is in the neighborhood because of the operation, uh, specifically uh, on School Street. Um, I understand that the, uh, the old health center is no longer part of Sean's property. So am I correct in assuming that there won't be any industrial traffic on School Street now? And my last concern deals with, um, uh, um, an increase of traffic on the stream, boat traffic on the stream. And has that been assessed? Is there any concern about that? Thank you.
Um, so there is a series of questions there and Jeff, where, yeah, Jeff Allen. Yeah, okay. Did you get, get some of those things down in case you had to wait a, not a second, but at the right time? Okay.
Yes, I do have those comments recorded.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm scanning for any other, um, hand waving, virtual or physical, um. Okay, okay, seeing none. Um, and just a time check for everybody. It is now eight o'clock. I've got eight oh one. Um, so now we're at a stage where we would say, uh, questions. Um, let's see now, questions of the butters and interested parties, uh, questions of the butters and interested parties. Presenting comments by the board members and the applicant through the chair. So are there questions of the butters and interested parties? Um, that we need to do now? Any? Does anybody have questions of the butters and interested parties presenting comments that were heard earlier? So Jeff, any questions of the butters or interested parties?
No, I can, I can provide some responses if, if that's appropriate at this time.
Um, just one, I think just one second before, um.
Yeah, I just had one last thing to add.
Go ahead.
Um, so I really understand this whole environmental concern, of course, uh, somebody who also drinks water at Brightside sometimes. But this is also where their family lives. They're drinking this water. Their concern is our concern. They have dogs that they rescued living there. Mandy's daughter lives there. Like, let's think about this. They're just as concerned as we are. I just want everybody to understand that. They're drinking this water too.
Okay. Thank you for that point. It's a good point. So getting back to Jeff, um, if if there are no other questions of the butters and interested parties, this would be a good time to help address some, some things. So go for it, Jeff.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think Mr. Turn's, uh, comments, and I'm just gonna go down the list as I have it and some I'll be able to respond to others. I, I will have to do some more research. First was, uh, Mr. Turn's comments about the visibility poor on the road and the road is narrow. That's not something that we can address really. Um, the, the road width is what it is. I believe the town has a twenty foot right of way and, and if they decide to widen that, then you know, that's something the town has the opportunity to do. That is not something that, uh, is, is related to the application. Next, the, uh, Monica, I scribbled down her last name and I'm sorry, I can't read it, but um, she was concerned about the well and, and that's a valid concern, um, but, um, through the state drinking water people, we've looked into that a little bit. And they're, uh, most concerned about wells that are within three hundred feet. I don't know if you're within three hundred feet horizontally from, uh, Mr. Grant.
I am. I fully am.
Yep, thank you. Um, but that's, you know, the wells are a concern and is, um, this, um, Haley just pointed out, the, the grants live there. And sort of tying this in with some of the other, uh, questions that people had about doing oil water separators or doing some sort of a stormwater collection system. You know, ideally, the best thing to happen is not to have a concentration of oil getting into the water. So or, or, you know, any pollution getting into the water. If it gets in, that's a different issue. But, uh, I think, uh, as Mr. Grant said, they try to drain these as much as they can. Uh, I don't think they're disassembling engines out in the field. Uh, any sort of work on engines, I'm assuming would be in the shop. Uh, and we saw that that doesn't have any floor drains in there. It's a concrete floor. So if there's a spill, um, it can be cleaned up. Um, one other thing I, just to comment briefly about the, uh, the photos. Um, I think they showed really well that there's, there's a lot of chemicals in there that they use from time to time for shellac or paint thinner. But they're right there on the shelf. If there's a spill that occurs, it's a spill in the shop that they're gonna see and they're gonna clean up immediately. It's not something that's going to be, uh, going to happen. And, you know, a leak occur gradually over time and it run off the site. This is in the shop. They're gonna see if there's a mess and wanna clean it up. Uh, I think I agree with Mr. Huntington that, uh, a butters, uh, who was not in a butter, but he mentioned that year round employers are important. I agree with that. Uh, Mr. Taroon or Susan, I'm not Mr. or Miss or Mrs. Uh, was concerned about the long term, term impact for the neighborhood. And, and the relationship between, uh, Mr. Grant and the neighbors. That's, you know, that's a tough issue. Uh, certainly, I, I wouldn't wanna drive home and have to be, have a a, uh, problem with, um, my neighbor. But that's something that, that can be worked on. I think right now, Mr. Grant is under a fair amount of stress. And, uh, this, that, that's beginning to show in some of his reactions. So I don't know. Maybe, uh, when this gets done, uh, things will be back to a, a better situation. Sam, uh, mentioned about publishing and, uh, Mr. Russian confirmed that they're gonna be, uh, posting the new app online, uh, tomorrow. And I believe the town manager spoke to that as well. Ms. Cody, uh, mentioned about the town needs a service and that's, you know, that's an important thing. And, and another, uh, gentleman spoke to the increased traffic on the stream. I think that's a good thing. That means that, uh, there's additional business coming to town. People are coming in and, and wanting to spend their money in your, in your community. That's a good thing. Um, I don't think that is, is a negative issue at all. The Richard spoke about, um, stormwater and, and the drain system. And I mentioned that earlier. But I think, um, you know, if, if the need arose, just looking at it from a civil engineering stand, standpoint, uh, if we put in catch basins, there'd be no place to let the water out. Uh, the site that, uh, where the, the shop is right downtown is pretty flat. Uh, in Maine, we have to put, uh, stormwater pipes for four and a half feet or five feet below the surface. So the water doesn't, uh, freeze in the pipes over the winter. Uh, four and a half people, the surface is the elevation is lower than the elevation of the lake. So there wouldn't be any place for the water to drain to. So that, that really limits our options and what we can do in that situation. Mr. Strobel had the question about parking. Uh, we've addressed that by, we are going to rotate the parking to, require parking sideways instead of parallel to the road, rather than being perpendicular to the roads as it has been. Um, I, I'm still confused about his traffic on Red Oak Lodge Road. Um, there shouldn't be any more traffic than there is now. People won't be entering the site from Red Oak Lodge and the only, you know, it's a dead end road. Private versus commercial boats. I don't think we've really resolved all of that. And the fut- future structures, certainly, uh, he was concerned about will require permits and whether those permits are from the planning board or from, uh, the code enforcement officer. Uh, those, you know, those permits will be necessary from the town. Uh, Sam's sister Olivia, uh, mentioned that it's, that it's unattractive uh, and concerned about her well contamination, water quality. Um, you know, I, I, I can't, can't do much for aesthetics. I'm more of a concrete guy and pushing dirt around. Um, and I don't know how, how to address that issue. Um, there wasn't a specific, uh, mi- mention of that. Maybe she can clarify that a little bit more. But again, she expressed the same concern about well contamination, water quality. And again, I'd say the main issue is not that, uh, not to remove water or remove pollution from the water, once it's in the water. But it's more important to prevent the water or the pollution from getting in the water in the first place. And again, I think their, their goals, uh, at, uh, Brightside are to, you know, not allow it to get in there in the first place. And that's involved with draining boats before they store them.
Jeff, I had a question for you, if it would be appropriate at this time. But you just mentioned, um, something about maybe getting, getting a clarif- clarifying question, uh, um, or answer from one of the persons who had asked a question before.
Yeah, I believe it was Olivia. That was Sam Spring's sister.
So could we take the, the minute to get the clarifying question to help you get an answer, uh, at this time?
Okay.
So Olivia, I believe.
Was it about the unattractiveness?
Yes.
Um, it was just adding on to what other people were saying that there's, um, trailers and boats being stored in these kind of piles around and that not being included in the site plan and not specified. So it's just reiterating kind of what other people had also brought up.
Okay, thank you very much for the clarification.
Thanks, Jeff.
And lastly, uh, uh, Ms. Hemminger, um, mentioned about the, the question about personal boats being exempted. I, I have my opinion. That's probably not germane to this. I think it should be, but, um, uh, Matt, Mr. Burn, Burlinger, Burlinger, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, sir. Had questions about hours of operation and I believe those are listed in the application. If not, it's on the window at, at, uh, Brightside. Um, there, I don't believe they're proposing to change those hours of operation. This application does not apply to both sides of Hulan Road for commercial. It's, this application is for the, uh, south side of Hulan Road and the property itself. It's, this application is for the, uh, south side of Hulan Road and, and the property itself. I'm not sure. About the industrial traffic on School Street. If that property has been sold, so. What happens on School Street is not. I, I don't think we have any control over that. Um, and again, he mentioned the increased traffic on stream that I cited as being a, an actual benefit to the community. And that's, those are all the, the comments that I was able to, to take down, sir.
Okay, thanks, Jeff, I appreciate that. So we've kind of done a couple of things here. We're in, in an area for questions of the butters and interested parties. By, and this, these will be by the planning board members applicant. I don't, I didn't see any hands raised by the planning board members or the applicants to ask. Of the interested parties and the butters. So we then went into a spot where Jeff could then offer up some answers. Um, to some of the comments that had been addressed so far. So, um, uh, just one second, Mr. Kates, um, George.
Um, I have two questions for the, um, commenters, um. A number have, uh, that live on Red Oak, uh, Lodge Road have mentioned, uh. In various forms, either the unsightliness or the visual impact. Of, uh, the boat stored there. And the potential for impacting their property values and the site plan shows that there's, um. Woods between the area where the boats, I, I, the area that I think where the boats are stored, I, I'm not sure. Because it's, they're not really showing on the site plan, but I, I just was wondering if somebody could confirm whether or not. There's a, uh, natural vegetation, woods in particular between Red Oak Lodge Road and, and where the boats are currently stored.
And offer, uh, that there are a number of boats stored on Red Oaks Lodge Road without a barrier. And indeed, the junk cars, rephrase, the cars that Mr. Grant is storing. On his property do not have a buffer between our cabin and our well. And his property, and I'm happy to invite you or any member of the planning board to come up to our cabin and take a look at, um. Pro- both the proximity of the well and the. The stuff that we see across the way.
George, did that help answer your question?
It does. I'd be interested in a, any of the other commenters on that same question if they have a perspective on that.
Um, I would just like to say to echo what Monica said, there were actually periods of time this past summer where there's so little vegetation. That the trailer hitch of the trailer, what do you call that? The front, the tongue of the trailer is in the gravel of the right of way, so we have to go around it. And we drive fairly large vehicles, all of us, I think, too. So you have to kind of try to get around the trailers without hitting the vegetation that is on the eastern side of. Way which would be.
So Stacy, you're a little broken up there, um, but I think we got what you're saying, though. It was only at the end that it was a little, little garbled or whatever. Um, are there any other butters that can help answer George's question?
You're speaking, you can speak. Go ahead.
No, I, I just wanna talk to, uh, Mr. Allen.
Um, before you do, uh, di- does it answer George's question about the screening?
He wants to know if you wanna talk about the screening.
Uh, no, I did not want, I would assume that somebody is gonna take a look at the screening and find out. That, that, wha- what we have is absolutely unacceptable. Somebody's gonna go look at that. But to tug on what was just discussed is that the drainage ditch is full of. Uh, boat trailers and that should not be allowed. But I, that, that concern was what George was talking about.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taroon. Did, did your questions get answered?
Yeah, I, I have a second question for, uh, a number of the commenters that express concern about their wells, which is understandable. The, um. The, uh, I, I'm wondering if any of, uh, any of. If any of those, uh, homeowners have had their, um. Well water tested for either petroleum products, vault, organics, or anything related that has this materials and. If they did, uh, whether they'd be willing to share those results with the planning board.
I have not, but I'm willing to do so.
Thank you, Monica. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Yeah, I lost my signal.
Like, I, I don't think I got a hand up.
But you can.
We can hear you, though.
Oh, you can hear me, you don't need my hand. Okay, I got lost on Ja- Jeff Allen, Mr. Allen. When he was talking about the Red Oak Lodge Road near, near, uh, Durn Road. The, the concern that we have is that. Red Oak Lodge Road is gonna be a dispository of all of the trailers. And it's gonna be, uh, used as an access to that section of the seven or eight acres that are left. To park the, the boats, because I think if you looked at one of the pictures we have, there was Sean pulling. Uh, one of his boats with a heavy, uh, um, front end loader. And, uh, he's going up the road to Red Oaks Lodge Road and he backs into my wife's car. While he was gonna try and back it, his boat into the. Clear cut area between the rocks and the stones. So I'm looking at. Where is the access he's just going to have for that seven or eight acres that are left, or maybe more. To park boats for the winter and, and. And score boats. And is that traffic gonna be on the little road or is he coming through his own facility there on Hulan Road? And you s- and Alan said something about at the corner of. Of, of Durn Road, and I got lost.
So thank you for your question. So Jeff, did you hear what, what he had to say?
I, I did, and I'm, I'm not sure where Durn Road is, if not, I'm, I'm a little confused with that, but, um. Yes, he had, uh, Mr. Grant has been using Red Oak Lodge Road, uh, as, uh, access for that, those parking areas. Um, there's also some discussion I've heard, um, that Red Oak Lodge is, is private beyond where the gravel. Or where the pavement ends, uh, that's actually a private road that he owns and there's a right of way across it. So there's, there's an issue of, of who owns what, uh, that, that I haven't gotten sorted, sorted out in my mind. Uh, other than, uh, the, I believe the town right of way ends at the end of the paved road.
That's.
Now Dad's done a bunch of research, so give him a moment.
That's true. That is true, and when I talk with, uh, with Gary Fuller and all, he keeps saying that the road that I. That we're talking about, Red Oak Lodge Road, is a private road because according to the village. Any road that they don't maintain is private, and I, obviously, the village don't wanna maintain as many roads. As everybody would like to have them maintained. We can't afford the taxes. So that is now a public road according to Sean. And, and I wish it's a right of way according to us. And he is using what we think is our driveway to park his boats and to travel in there with large. Vehicles pulling large boats and backing them in to randomly backing them into that facility. Or that, that area. And, and if you say, well, he owns part of the road, well, Samantha.
Yeah, Stacey, Monica.
Monica. Monica owns half of that road because she's a, they are butted the middle of the road.
The right of ways go half and half. And Dad about seven years ago, maybe ten years ago, worked with the BLA to get a grant to make sure that the road. Was gravelled and maintained and that the runoffs were, were, were done to the specification of the BLA. He spent quite a bit of money of his own making sure that that road met specifications. And if it is Sean's road, then do we bill him for twenty-three years of. Snow removal. I mean, it's never been an issue until now. It is not Sean's road. It is split fifty-fifty between Monica Schuler, Dennis LeVoy and Sean. So there has to be some way to work together to respect the owners of all of the properties.
Okay, thank you for that. That's good information. Um, I wanna go back to any of the planning board members or, or. Applicant, if they have any other clarifying questions of the butters and, or, and or parties. Wanna make sure we get those out. Okay, here, seeing none, I see a couple of hands raised that had been up for a bit, so thank you for your patience. So I think Stacy, you were up first, and then there's gonna go to Mr. Kates, I believe.
Hi again, I just wanted to address, um, what Mr. Allen was saying about the stormwater, um, drain system. If I understood correctly, um, his concern was how to drain the water from a basin or. Where the water would go from that, something about four feet down, but I think what I'm referring to may be something a little different. But I'm talking about specific brands such as a Bay Saver or a Vortex. Um, those are brand name systems of stormwater drain systems that are used internationally, um, to protect our waters. And from what I understand, we have a lot of DEP retirees on the planning board, so I'm assuming you. Know a lot more about this than me. Um, but the goal of those storm drains and stormwater systems. Is to separate the oil from the water and then the water stays in a septic system. And then that's the responsibility of the owner or the commercial applicant to figure out then where the water goes and how you're gonna. Do that, but the goal of the stormwater system is to protect the environment. Because as far as I understand, the reinforced turf is not an option for separating oil hazardous waste. Grease, whatever else, acid base washes that are necessary for winterization, um, those sort of things. So that was just my. Input, thanks.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Kates, you had your hand up. Thanks for your patience.
Thank you. I, I'll, I'll be very brief. I just, first of all, I'd defer to, to Jeff on all these issues about. Stormwater and waste separation. I, I believe what he said, though, is that everything he's put in the application with respect to those environmental issues have been. Vetted with the appropriate authorities at, at Department of Environmental Protection. And I'll, I'll defer to him if that's not correct, but I, I think that's what he's done. I just wanted to mention the, the issue of aesthetics. I. And I appreciate what everybody has said about they don't like looking at certain things, and I can, I can certainly understand that. I think the question from a, um, a planning board or, or a land use perspective. Is whether this is a junkyard or not, because people can store things on their own property and. And the neighbors may not like it very much. I might not like it very much if I were there, but. But the, but the question is whether it's a junkyard or not, and, and this clearly is not a junkyard. Because we've asked the question, and I understand the code enforcement officer has told us very clearly it's not. So I, I know Sean and, and I'm sure Samantha will listen carefully tonight, and it, maybe there are some things that will happen, but from a, an application perspective. Whether people. Like what they're looking at, um, as it exists now, as important as that may be, I, in their life, I get it. I, I don't think it's a legal issue as far as approval of this application is concerned, and I just wanted to get that in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kates. Rick, you had your hand up next.
Yes, thank you. Um, just going back to, maybe I miss, uh, misspoke about the entrance way. About the configuration going back on Hulan Road. So is there gonna be public access to the commercial property from Red Oak? Or is that gonna be all done from, uh, Hulan Road? Because if it's coming from Red Oak, it's just so narrow and I, I just. I don't think that's a really good idea. If you're going right through his property, um, back into the area. That is proposed, that would not be as much of a hazard for vehicles, animals, uh, that type of thing. Um, so I guess I go back to Red Oak Entranceway and to his commercial property, what he proposes. To be commercial property. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Um, and I think it was, it was the Tarhoons first and then Monica. I believe it went in that order. So.
There you go, you're on deck.
Okay, I, I, I agree with what he was just saying, because I believe that there's somewhere. In the county or state regs that say if you're gonna have a, a commercial. Property and a facility owner that's commercial, you've got to have something that's standard. Curbing and driveway and only singular. In order to go access it. That's what my understanding would be, but then you said that a lot of that is just planning. So maybe it's not an unauthorized requirement, but it doesn't seem to me. That randomly having access with commercial activity is. A safe and wise thing to be doing.
And my comment to Mr. Katz, Mr. Kates, Mr. Katz, um, is that, I mean, I understand your can. I, I don't know if you've seen the property. I understand that the boats might be considered valuable. I'm not sure an old Pinto is that, that's out there, is considered valuable, an old tractor, two, there's two cars and a tractor, so. I think that you should take a look at it before you make a, a judgment about. The junkyard definition, and I don't even, uh, it, you know, a buffer would be great.
Thank you, Monica.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna echo Susan Tarhoon's comment about a buffer would be great. Um, I just have sort of a side question. So. How does a person have fifteen to twenty boats and, and that's a personal use and, and yet. When you look at the property, you know, uh, Mr. Grant may not call that, oh my goodness, she's got my girl or. Um, Mr. To, Mr. Grant may not call it a junkyard and, and I can, I can agree to disagree. My concern is, remains with, what are the, the implications for him having all of this material there? Whether it is a boat or a tractor or a truck or a bazillion cars on not only my well. But let's go back to the element of water quality and potential drain off into Belgrade Lakes. All of us chose to be there. I may not be there year round, but I pay just as much taxes as I'm required to. Which means that I still get a voice here. Um. We. We care about Belgrade. We care about Belgrade Lakes. We care about water. We care about water quality. And I think that's what we need to keep going back to. Can we please reexamine the impact of this proposed. This proposal on water quality, on structure, on character of the town, on all the elements that people have brought up. And that's inclusive of well water, that's inclusive of runoff in the stream, that's inclusive, peek-a-boo. Um, that's inclusive of creating an environment that we can raise our kids and bring our grandkids to. That's what it, that's what it's, that's what, that's the end result. You know, we all love Belgrade Lakes. What is the best thing? Sorry about that, I was, what's the best thing for Belgrade Lakes? And I'm concerned that the proposal as presented does not address or fully. Answer the question of will it damage Belgrade and, and or Belgrade Lakes? That's my concern.
Thank you, Monica.
Sorry for rambling, but that's what we do, we have got kids.
Right, so there've been lots of, um, um, comments and stuff, so I think, I think we're at the point where. The applicants can rebut or make some comments to what has been said, so. So, um, for Brightside, uh, you have your hand up, and I know Samantha, you had your hand up too, so, yeah, go. Not Sean. Person not Sean.
Oh, me.
Yep.
Person not Sean, he said Samantha first, so I was like, okay, Mandy, go ahead. JT here, once again, foreman of the boat shop. I'd like to address a few different issues that have been discussed. First being the, uh, junkyard that we're discussing, understand unsightly. It's not our. It's not our prerogative to leave that stuff there. I've talked to a few of you about it. I know we all have. And it kind of hurts a little bit to have to do this over a town meeting as to opposed to being in person. Uh, the cars in question are not going to be there for very long. One of them is up for sale. One of them does not even have an engine in it. None of the boats, uh, via Stacy Richardson, Stacy Richard, sorry, and, uh, her husband Jared. No lead. There's no motors in any of those boats. They will not be there long term. Our goal is not to have a bunch of stuff. We were even trying to actually start to pick that area up before this process even began, just because we knew. We don't want to look at that. I mean, nobody does. But it's stuff we have and it's worth money and we have to allocate it as such. With that being said, on the environmental standpoint, Mandy has brought up Jen Jesperson, as has Sean. We are more green than a lot of the other businesses in this community. We use all natural materials. When we're sanding, we even use vacuum cleaners, dust-free Merka, check it out. Abernet with vacuum cleaners. It's quieter than a regular machine and it contains all the dust. We're trying hard, you guys. I mean, I just answered those three questions. Uh, Terry, get it. You guys, I get it. But we're all trying here.
Thanks, JT.
Answer.
I, I'd like to make sure Samantha has a chance to say something too.
Absolutely.
We can't hear you, Samantha. Not yet. I can see your lips moving and it says you, you're not muted, but.
Now, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Actually hit a button. Um, I, I, JT's absolutely right. Um, the, the work that was done out there was, um, project work. The Sean had intentions. We were working on cleaning up. The, the forester left more stuff there than we would have liked to have left there. Um, Sean had, has impending two irreparable shoulder damages that happened this spring, so he can't do it himself. Um, some of the boats and trailers there are there as a result of the town's request from our previous application to move some things off the visibility of the public road. So those are there at the town's request to, to not have as much stuff visible. And that's from the town's attorney as part of the consent agreement. So we, we were asked to, um, to have less things visible from the Hulan roadside. So that is the reason that some of those are there. Um, regarding Monica's comments on well water, we've had DEP out a number of times. We've contacted, we were actually one of the first lakeside marine organizations to try to become a smart, um, through the state program, a smart marine. Right now, they're not, that program's been sort of debunked from funding and they're only doing saltwater, but we're on the list. We've, um, had Jen Jesperson engaged to look at our stormwater runoff plan. And again, DEP's been out and invited out several times. Um, we've had consultants look at making recommendations. I mean, we've gone above and beyond, I think probably more so than any business or most businesses in this area to be green and lake healthy. In fact, we, I would love to have a water softener to stop replacing washing machines and dishwashers, but Sean is adverbly against that because it adds salt into the lake. So, you know, the, it, it, this is not, and as I think Haley mentioned, we live here, we drink the water. We're conscientious about it. We're, we're taking the necessary steps. I think the biggest issue is the aesthetics. And as JT said, the, the boats and such that are down there are, don't have motors. There are some motors, I think, in the storage shed, but most of them are drained and contained. And, uh, and I think I would also like to address the, the, the issues around what might happen. This application is about what the application is about, not what could happen in the future, because that would actually require additional planning board permitting and other public hearing. And, um, you know, I, you know, I think that that's, that's not part of the application. And so, you know, I think that's under the purview and I, and see JT jumping up and down.
Yep.
JT, go. We want to keep doing what we're doing. We want to be permitted for it. And we want two more employees. That's what we're asking for. Aesthetics can be accomplished to a certain extent within our rights. We want to meet the criteria. We want to have a good time doing it. We want to bring business to Belgrade to all of you inclusive, included, I should have said. And that's really the gist of it. Cut through all the red tape. That's what we're after.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stacy, I see your, did you have a question?
Oh, just a quick comment. Um, what JT just said makes a lot of sense that he just want, you want to add a couple more employees, continue doing what they're doing. Great. I would just ask that the application then go down to the one and a half acres or whatever the home steading permit is. That's, I think, one of our biggest issues. I can speak for both Turhune Properties, I think the Schuler Lavoy Property, that the entire eleven acre commercialization is one of our biggest issues. That just.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I would add that that's not possible, Stacy, because that was the request by the town and the legal consent agreement that we were requested to do by the town as part of our previous application and the negotiations that happened. So that's a, that's mandated by the town. Sorry. We were happy with what we had, but we're, but, uh, you know, there's some can, there's some, something to be said about whether or not a boat repair business should have been issued a home-based permit. And what we discovered in our last um, legal discussion was that possibly not. Um, but the home-based permit exists and the, there's three things that we agreed that we exceeded. Boat rentals, boat tours, boat storage, based on the permit that we have. So those are the three additional things that we're asking for based on the request from the town to apply for this permit and to include all of the, the lots that we have.
Thank you. Um, Susan Terhun, I see your hand up.
Yeah. I guess I'm, but my question is, it's up the, to the town to understand the capacity for the space, to understand what they started with this and, and take some type of ownership in the big picture of what's happening. I understand what you're saying, Samantha. It's, it's a little condescending, but it's, it, because that shows me you don't really want to be a good neighbor and you don't want to work with us in any way, shape or form. So.
That's not, that's not true at all, Susan. Not true, not true.
All work together and the town needs to take some ownership about what they truly want for the long term, for the community in that space, understanding the consequences of making it all commercial. There are intended consequences that we don't know about today or tomorrow, but maybe in five or 10 years. And I think that needs to be considered.
Okay, thanks, JT.
But if anything extends over and above what we're talking about, we'll be having the same meeting we are right now. If we're trying to put more buildings in, do more than what we're doing, other than what's on this application, we will all have a chance to talk once again. If we're encroaching upon your property or so forth, that will be discussed at a later date.
Could I jump in here with my buddy? As the, uh, as it's been shown to me over all this litigation over the last three years, is as I acquire properties, they become, they become contiguous to the one adjacent to. So, you know, I have no choice, but all of this property has to be on that, uh, on that application because it's now all contiguous because I now all own it. If the town would permit me on that one and a half acres, uh, I would gladly do it. But then the phosphorus numbers would never, never work.
Has to be one.
Go ahead, JT.
As Sean was just saying, the, the land requirements are as such. So your concern is the property that goes all the way up, abutting your property is going to affect you. But what we're really trying to do is down where we are at the shop, we have to have this amount of property in order to do that.
Right. Thanks, JT. Samantha, your hand is still up. Do you want to have a rebuttal comment?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say this has nothing to do with being good neighbors or not being good neighbors or not wanting to be good neighbors. You know, we harvested the wood to help pay for, for the, the the, the previous fines and the, and the application process for this. It didn't make people happy. You know, it's sort of a domino effect that, um, you know, we would never have done that if we weren't forced to do that financially. And, and so I think, you know, it has, it has nothing to do with that. And I, I, I would say that we also feel that some of our neighbors are hostile as well. And, um, and, and I will, I won't go into the details here because this is really not the place, but we also have some stories to tell. And that's outside of this application process and outside of the permit. I understand the aesthetics. We're working to clean it up and working, but again, that is, you know, a, a private property. And, uh, you know, I think that, that we have to keep that, that, that this is what we've been asked to do by the town and we agreed to do by court order consent and to include all that property. And I think it was the planning board that asked us to include it.
Thank you, Samantha. JT.
And, you know, without a lot of money, sorry, Peter, I didn't mean to cut you off right there. Without a lot of money, it's hard to push things along as quickly as people would like to see. You know, I would love to have that look perfect, like the Terhunes, the Lavoy's, the Richards want. If we had our way, we would have just, we would have gotten the permit, we've done everything, we would have had everything we had set in place and we wouldn't be putting stuff up out of our own way. Or making a mess as some people might see it, but that's development. And when it has to happen slowly, it's unfortunate, but we're not millionaires. That's where we're at right now. That's what I'd say.
Yep. Thank you. Um, Rick, I see your hand up. Is it brief?
Yes, very, very brief. I still haven't heard any, any, um, information as to the entranceway, whether, um, Red Oaks Road is going to be the entranceway out into the proposed field or will it go through Hulan Lane? Because right now, Red Oaks is the entranceway and it has been used as such.
I can answer that. The, the, the primary commercial property is as it is. The entrance is through Hulan. We're not proposing a commercial entrance through Red Oaks Lodge.
You're using, you're using Red Oaks now.
We're, we're using it to park some boats, but it's not for customers.
Temporarily.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's.
And I will also.
I, I just want to see the vision from you guys as far as, is the entranceway going to be here or is it going to be wherever it works? Um, because I think that's really important to all the neighbors and my grandkids that frequent that road and play and other vehicles that go on there. Their safety. I, I just haven't heard that, no, we will not be using Red Oaks.
And can you define that rarely?
If that's not the case, that's fine. I just wanted feedback on that.
Okay, thank, thank you, Samantha. Thanks, JT. Okay.
May I ask what you mean by temporarily?
I think Monica, you're asking that of the applicant. So JT, do you have any, anything?
Temporarily, uh, being whether or not we get the commercial permit. Temporarily, whether or not we are able to continue moving stuff as we will. Temporarily as it being as it is right now is already temporary.
Thank you.
Respectfully, that's not an answer temporarily. You're, you're, you're being very elusive there. When I hear temporarily, I'm thinking about a time constraint, like two weeks, six weeks, seven weeks, seven months. Um, temporarily, I, I, please, I'm just asking for a little bit more specifics.
I think the intention is to, to organize that area, but I, but I don't think that, that if we apply for this commercial permit, that we're suggesting that we can restrict use for personal boats. If we are asked to put parking, boat parking on the application for that, then obviously that would be part of the permit.
And as a follow-up, as a follow-up, may I ask, you had mentioned earlier that you had, uh, let me look at my notes. You have between fifteen and twenty personal boats. So that's how many boats you plan on temporarily storing in that area? Fifteen to twenty boats?
Not, not ideally, not ideally. Because they would be better off behind our home. But it is possible. And I, I will add, there's the issue between personal boats and corporate boats. And I, Brightside is incorporated and there are personal boats there that are personal boats, not owned by the corporation. Sean was always a boat hobbyist prior to this. I think a number of people can attest to that.
Thank you. Um, I see a Terhune hand up, very brief thing? Or is it just a residual hand, maybe? Okay. Going to George. George, you see your hand up.
Um, two clarifications, um, based on what I've heard in the way of rebuttal from the applicants. I'm a little confused about the boats proposed for storage off of Red Oak Lodge Road. Um, earlier, we heard that, uh, there was testimony that, uh, those boats are waiting to be restored. Consequently, they're part of the commercial operation. Just heard that they're actually personal boats. Which is it?
I think what Sean said was there was a number of personal boats and two customer boats. The majority are personal boats. Right? Is that right, Sean?
There, there are one or two spec boats out there as well, George, no question. There's one, two, maybe even three that I would, uh, one day expect to hopefully sell and make a, uh, restoration job. But there are a number that are, I sought out. For example, my wife and I could tell you a glorious story of going down to New Jersey shore one day to score a nineteen fifty-one Chris Craft Riviera eighteen footer. It's out back there, just waiting for me to find the time, as well as a number of other hulls. Point being, I could give you story after story of why there are boats out there that are near and dear to my heart, that I sought out, that we have money in, but my company didn't buy it. I did.
So my second question.
It's a mix.
Thank you. So my, my second question is, and so, something of a suggestion to Jeff is, um, I, I would suggest in advance of the next meeting, you take a look at the, uh, section five of the ordinance that deals with material storage. I'm trying to respond to some of the complaints about, um, aesthetics and, um, particularly from those boats, some of which are part of the commercial operation, albeit not many. Uh, and whether, um, additional, uh, additional screening, uh, should be provided there. Um, or whether the natural woodland that's remaining after the cutting operation is adequate. Uh, you'll see, and I'll read it for you. Outdoor storage areas, external machinery in areas used for the storage or collection of motor vehicles, parts, metals, or articles of salvage or refuse must have sufficient setbacks and screening such as stockade fence or dense evergreen hedge to provide a visual buffer sufficient to minimize their impact on abutting residential users and users of, of public streets. The latter, of course, isn't applicable because it's a private, private road. But, um, the, the, the first part of that is all applicable, in my opinion.
Can I interject? Is it my place to?
Sean, you can. Sean, you can.
If this is such a huge area of contention, we are truly talking about a small number of boats. If everybody is going to pee their pants all night long over this, I'll. If everybody is going to pee their pants all night long over this, I'll move them. I rent a facility up in Rome. We have our indoor storage there. There's a parking lot that's three times the size of mine down here. Let's just move the boats and move on.
I'm fine with that.
And the cars and the sheds and all of that, like, and the tractor and the cars, will those go too?
Perhaps the applicants would want to consider. Yeah. Okay. Oh, Peter.
Hang on back now. Anyway, I'm sorry. What was that? I missed it.
I said, will you be moving the cars and the shed and the tractor?
Cars are not mine. I, I, a friend of mine asked if he could park them there and so I allowed him to, but they are unregistered. And which is, uh,
And disabled, and disabled.
You look at the local ordinance, uh, you're allowed two unregistered vehicles on your property. That's the only
But this is the part about just be a good neighbor. That's what we're asking. Be a good neighbor.
I was being a good neighbor to my friend who needed to help. Susan, stop talking for a moment. The other Belgrade neighbor that asked if he could park his cars here because he lost his storage was a friend of mine. He'd always been good to me, so I said yes.
I also would like to add that, uh, Gary and Gary, uh, Gary Fuller's on here. He, I believe Gary, you went out and inspected the site and we got confirmation from Gary and Anthony that there were no code violations or, and this was not considered a junkyard, so they have inspected it and and I think that's a, that's a ruling that needs to be noted for the record.
It's an important point. Thank you. Um, I've seen some hands up now, just for record here. We have, we have gone through what I think would be the, the six, uh, the five of the, of this hearing. So we are extending this, I think, a little bit to make sure we he- hear the concerns and give the applicants a chance to ha- have a, a, a way to answer some of these things. But I do not want this to turn into some uncivilized matter, right? If there's something that goes beyond what this application is about, is something that's beyond what this ordinance is about, please take it up outside of this meeting. Couple last
Thank you.
Welcome. Last comments. I, I see hands up. I see, um, do you had your hand up first, I think, and then, uh, Cody, and then I think we go back to Terhune, so Stacy. Maybe. Stacy's it, cannot, not yet.
Sorry, I was not aware. It was me. I'm sorry. I just wanted to quickly address Mr. Seal's question, which it was a few minutes ago now, but I believe his question was, the storage on Red Oaks Lodge Road, is it uh, Mr. Grant's personal boats or are they private boats that are being used commercially? And I think the, I don't know if everyone has the photos, but we received a file of around ninety photos on March third. Um, that I believe Mr. Wilson and Mr. Fuller went out and took. If you start at photo forty-seven and continue on, that's everything in question. I think we, we all may be some people, not of, of the majority of us, but some people are not, um, understanding the difference between the boats that are on the Red Oaks Lodge Road and the boats that are neatly perfectly stacked and everything behind, um, Mr. Grant's shop. His shop area looks great. The storage behind there, great. I think the photos clearly identify a commercially well-done area versus what we're calling the junkyard, and that's the concern. And that's an evolving thing. Right now, I have no idea because we're in Connecticut for the winter. But in the summer, there's boat trailers with different state license plates, so it definitely is a commercial use and it's not just a personal use.
Those coming back.
And my husband's saying, are those coming back? That's a concern of ours. That's it.
Thank you. JT.
Yes. Okay. So, uh, there was some pictures taken today. Uh, have you seen those Stacy? Or those, uh, pictures as of weeks ago?
The photos I'm referring to are the ones that were taken on March third by Mr. Anthony Wilson and Mr. Gary Fuller. I believe it's ninety-seven photos. It's something over ninety photos that I think was forwarded to maybe thirty people, including everyone on the planning board.
And they did a good job, actually. I was glad they took as many detailed photos as they could.
I agree.
So, and what Sean was just saying previously before we got on that last little tier here. Understood. A lot of that stuff will go away. A lot of that stuff is actually already gone. And it is also a result of us, let's call it scrambling. I mean, we're working really hard. We're working really hard just to stay alive. And that, I'm calling it overflow, but we're moving stuff, which is, as Sean said, his personal stuff to make room for customer stuff, just so we can try to get a weekly paycheck here. So, again, like you said, that stuff can go away. The long-term plan is not for that stuff to be there anyway.
Thanks JT. Stacy, your hand is still up. I, I think that must be a remnant. Okay. I'd like to go to Cody next, whose hand is up.
Hi, thank you. Um, so again, question Cody. Um, I guess, yeah, there, there is a little confusion. This seemed to turn into, um, I guess ninety-seven pictures of junk, which is not what I thought all this was about. Um, but I, I mean, you know, I, there's plenty of complaints about, you know, people even in Hewland neighborhood that have crap in their yard that nobody likes to look at, but it is what it is. I think that, you know, both Sean and Samantha have tried to offer neighbors suggestions, um, and willingness to do things. Um, and yet at the same time, then that's been met with, well, when and how much and what, but, but that. And the fact of the matter is, is that if this gets approved, or even if it doesn't get approved, it's his property. He can park whatever he wants on it within, obviously, the permits or the guidelines of the town, but I mean, I think everybody has to work together to make this successful and it certainly sounds like the grants are willing to do that. They want their business to continue. They want it to be successful. That's obviously what our town wants and needs, all of our tourists want and need. And everybody wants their neighbors to be happy. So I, I think that, uh, we need to move on from the junk pile. That certainly has been discussed and get back to the matter at hand, which is the permit for this commercial business.
Thank you. Um, the Terhune's have a hand up. Do you have a focused in, comment? Okay. And Cody, your hand's still up. I think that must be left over, so I'm not hearing anything else from you, either of those two people. So that means we've come a full three hours to go through the five sections of this public hearing. Um, Mr. Allen, I think, uh, you're representing the applicants. You, you know that there is, is still some work to do, right?
Yes, I'm, I got the list of, uh, items that we need to address in the, on the planning or on the site plan. And that's something that, uh, that we should be able to turn around pretty quickly. Um, some of the other issues we'll certainly look at and see what, how we can uh, perhaps explain better how we're addressing water quality and, uh, issues for boat washing and other issues like that to get that all, uh, incorporated. Because a- as I said earlier, this is sort of an evolving process and we're making it better each time. And that's our, our objective and, uh, hopefully that'll, uh, you know, get things going, but.
Thank you. To level set expectations relative to the boat wash, I think George said some things that were pretty clear about, you know, what some of the expectations might have been about what it means to wash the boats, what we could expect to see coming off the boats and what that might mean about how you control, eh, that coming off, right? So I'm, I'm thinking if you paid attention to the, those questions and addressed those very thoroughly, that would very be very helpful at the next meeting, whatever that would be. JT, I see you shaking your head and then we're going to go to
Yes.
Kate's after that.
I would request that, uh, the planning board send that list to Jeff as well as the planning board secretary, if you would, and CC us on it, obviously. Exactly what we need to provide.
Yeah, that would be very helpful for me if I had a very clear roadmap of, of what, uh, we need. So I, you know, I can start on this, but, uh, I, I probably won't submit anything until we have your, uh, comments to make sure I address all of those.
And this is Monica Schuler. May I ask, how will you be addressing my concerns and some of the other abutters' concerns related to well water?
Uh, I have to think about that some. I don't know right now. I think, uh, you know, I, I thought when we filed the application that we had addressed all those issues. Uh, I, I guess I need to explain things a little bit better. So I, I don't have a clear answer on that right now.
Well, I would say based on where the, uh, commercial activity is actually taking place, that should be pretty straightforward considering there's no wells within X amount of space, Monica's place is up the road.
Okay.
There's not a lot going on there. And we discussed that we would move stuff from there to, uh, try to get rid of you guys' concerns.
Okay, I respect that. I would just, I would feel a little bit better if I had an engineering, um, verification that my well water will not be contaminated by whatever it is that you are planning on doing now and or in the future. Look, I'm just trying, I, I just, I just want to be able to keep drinking my water from the well, okay? So it's, it's as simple as that.
You also understand that you have to produce what your well is also has going on with it. And I believe you have a reverse osmosis system there, so you already have uranium. So that should also be, uh, included in Jeff's analysis.
I'm sorry, absolutely noted, but I would just, I'm just respectfully asking that this is addressed. And it's not just my well, but there are the other wells around me. I mean, Rick mentioned his and
Of course. And as we said, we don't want to be drinking any weird water either. I mean, I buy turbuline water. I'll, I'll boil it before I drink it, like.
Well, boiling it will not necessarily get rid of some of these contaminants.
That's not what I meant by that comment.
Monica, we're going to move on. Uh, Mr. Kates, um, what did you have to say? We, we can't hear you unfortunately. I'm sorry.
I apologize. I, I've been listening as well. I, I, I know the hour is late. But I think it, it would be wise to, to, for the applicant to be able to leave tonight's meeting knowing the list of things that we are being asked to produce. And I've, I've made a list as I've been listening. I can certainly run through that. But to say, you know, we, we, we want to get a list from the planning board of what, of additional information. Um, I don't know how that gets done. And I, I, I think we should be able tonight to agree on what it is that the, that the applicant has said that they will produce.
Okay, so let me answer that a little bit. Typically during these things, when we go through an application test, we identify those things and it's the responsibility of the applicant to take notes. And have made a list. Let's run through that list. We can clarify it and then head out, head out, head on out.
That's, that's fine. I'd be happy to run through at least mine.
Do so.
And, and again, it probably won't be in the best English because I'm reading my, my notes here. Number one, we need to show where on the site plan the sheds are. Number, this, number two, something that just came up, we need, we'll get more details on the boat washing operation. And, and plans for that. And the three, we'll amend, we'll amend the plan to, to specify the locations for boat storage, wherever those are going to be. A- as well as, um, trailers that are not part of the, uh, uh, anywhere on the, on the site. Uh, next that we will show, um, we're, we're going to resolve the, wh- what we plan to do or not do with respect to uh, their continued renting of space from their neighbors, their garage. We're going to clarify what the plan is for that. With respect to the, um, the, the gravel area, the gravel and, and loam area and grass area, we're going to provide the manufacturer's information in more detail with respect to the design and installation of that system. Um, we're going to make clear who it was, who it is that's going to do the transportation and disposal of any gasoline or oil. Um, again, we're going to show the location of the boat washing. We're going to resolve the, the, how the parking is going to get done in a way that, that Jeff was talking about earlier. And I think that that is the list of clarifying things that we, we were asked to do and that we are agreeing to do. If I've missed something, it's inadvertent, but that's my list.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kates. Um, I think one last thing, and George, keep me honest. We talked about screening standards and we cited each twenty-two, section five of, of that, that we referred the applicant to, to consider for, um, uh, this application.
Yeah, we will. Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon me for interrupting.
Go, go ahead, Mr. Kates.
I will say, we'll address that issue. One, one way or another, what, what we plan to do or with respect to that. I think we need to talk a little bit about the requirements of the, of the ordinance and where in fact they may be willing to go above, beyond those requirements, but we'll, we'll address that as well.
Perfect. Thanks.
So Peter, um, Mr. Kates has nicely captured, uh, uh, the items that I had outlined.
And I think he captured one, one that Mac had. Mac, you have a hand up.
Yeah, I, I do want to say I'm uncomfortable with the, the, the methodology here, just listing what needs to be done, because I think the application is significantly changed or sufficiently changed. Um, that you could argue it's a different application and therefore requires a new application process to go through and determine whether it's complete. Have a new public hearing. Uh, I, I, I've heard a lot of discussion tonight about how what we have in front of us is not the most recent submittal. And so the most recent submittal lists a couple of different things, specifically number sixteen on the application. Provided brief description of the development of proposal. That's been expanded significantly and i- if that's the case, you know, we need details. I, I for, for me, I've always looked at this application the same way I look at all applications. I look at what is in front of me. And if I have to act on what's in front of me and what's in front of me is not the same as what a lot of people are talking about. And so it's not that I think that what you're saying is wrong or, or that you're not going to do what you're going to say. You're not going to do what you're saying you're going to do. I'm not accusing you of anything. I'm just saying, I don't have that information in front of me. And I have to act on what's in front of me. And so if the site plan is going to change significantly and if the application is going to change significantly, then it's a completely different application, I would argue. And that changes the timeline of when the, the planning board has if we, if we are in fact changing by listing off storage areas and sheds and other things, that modifies the phosphorus export analysis because you have a different amount of impervious surface. You have different amount of other materials. Um, and looking at the submission requirements, they're talking about water quality specifically relative to the, the drainage way. I mean, uh, specifically relative to the storage area off Red Oaks Lodge. Uh, the site plan should have should have location of floodplains, water courses, water bodies and wetlands, water courses. Also should have drainage ways. You know, there's a lot of topography in that back area that's just not identified. And so I think that if we saw that on the site plan, where water is draining, how it's affected by what's going on, that could help us determine whether that's an appropriate place for boat storage. And if boat storage again was appropriately delineated on the plan, along with whatever storage is there. Again, I'm not trying to accuse anybody of anything. I'm just trying to say I want clarity. I cannot act on something without clarity and there's just not a lot of clarity that, that I'm seeing here.
Mr., Mr. Chairman, point of order, if I could, sir.
Yep.
The application is complete. The CEO has determined that the application is complete. That's not a planning board role. That's a CEO role. And one of the things that was said at the beginning is the application is complete. The board is appropriately asking for additional detail. And, and we are agreeing to, to provide that and we will provide it. But that's in the context of this board's review of a complete application. And now it's within the board's purview to, to deal with that application, which is what you're doing. But there's a, there is an existing application before you, which has been deemed complete. We are happy to provide the additional information you've, you've asked for. Jeff will, will get to work on that and we, we will and, and hope that we can reconvene at, at your next meeting to, to deal with all that. Thank, thanks.
Thank you. George, did you have something?
Uh, no, not at the moment.
Okay, all right. All right. So I want to ask the planning board, you know, um, Mr. Cates came up with, he did a great job at recapping what we had talked about this evening where we had questions of the applicant. More detail was, is required. Uh, to Max's point, I think anything that would, um, the detail that would support the, the questions like on question 16 would be very helpful, most certainly. So, so to the planning board members, have we missed or has that list that Mr. Cates presented that not cover something? George?
Let Rich go first. I, I, I'll, I'll start. I got a question.
Actually, mine was, and my, I may be out of order here, but I had a question of the applicant regarding the boat washing operation. And we may have gone by where that would have been discussed.
I would, I would say let's ask it. We're here.
I just wonder, with the boat washing, there's one aspect of, yeah, you're washing the algae off. I don't know how much of it is removing bottom paint, uh, whatever. I'm not sure what the best word for it, but I know that my understanding is that's not good material. And I didn't know how much of this boat washing would wash this, you know, take it off or even if they were going to repaint the boat, whether they use a pressure washer to, to get the old paint off.
So Jeff, you may want to think about what that is or if you have any answer.
Yeah, I, I don't know if, you know, if, uh, bottom paint is, comes off. I, I guess it might, but that's something I'd have to talk over with Sean and JT to really ascertain how that's, that's done.
JT?
Questions, answers. Yeah, okay. So if we are pressure washing a boat with algae like you're talking about, if it's just algae building up on a bottom paint, it'll be a really light wash to the level of where there's no paint taking off, especially if it's adhered very well. If there is any paint that seems like it might come off, we'll put a tarp down. Any flakes or whatever that comes off goes into the commercial dumpster. If it needs to be replaced, we use it with a biocide paint, which is a water-based product, which is applicable, safe water.
Thank you, Rich.
A lot of, I wasn't finished. A lot of the really, uh, bad bottom paints are specifically for saltwater boats. And we're in freshwater. It's, it's, it's not as much of a, uh, as a hassle as you might think it might be.
Thank you.
And in my observation, they always use best practices around that. I mean, there, Sean and JT are very good about using marine best practices and staying up to date on that. They both have training.
We're onto a lot of, uh, water-based stuff these days, even with our barnishes. Uh, I think it was Rich. Maybe that brought up, uh, oil-based paints and stuff. The, uh, we keep up to date with, uh, products and there's a lot of water-based stuff that's really making it up and coming in the industry, just as electric is replacing gasoline. So water-based stuff dries faster. It's more environmentally friendly. We get the job done quicker for our employees and it's environmentally safe. So great products. Love it.
Thanks JT. Rich, did you hear a question?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, other planning board members, are there, are there any other other things we have not yet addressed that we need to have, um, presented to the applicant so that when they leave, they know what we're expecting? Pete, I saw your hand up.
Well, I, uh, you've done a fantastic, we think the process has gone along very well. And we've gotten a lot of additional information and that list is a very much germane to this application. I think it's getting late. If we can kind of close things up and, and move on.
Please, George?
Um, I would just want to add and make sure everybody's clear that, uh, at our next meet, meeting, we're going to go through the whole application, I assume, as we always do for more, uh, possibly in even greater detail in some cases. I've tried, at least for myself, tried to raise issues today, so there's adequate time to address them. But I don't want anybody to believe that, um, we're not with, well within our rights to ask additional questions, ask for additional clarification or even ask for additional information depending on what's in the newest application that unfortunately none of the board members have seen. And I think that, you know, partly rests on the town, um, that that did not happen. But the, uh, uh, so I, I, I just want to say that because, um, this is a continuing process on both sides of the ball and, uh, and I fully intend to look over what the new application with a fine tooth comb. And if I have more concerns, I will certainly raise them at that time. Having said that, Peter, um, and the respect Peter Sargent's comment, um, the, uh, what, before we leave, I, I, I think whether it's now or, or there's something else that you wanted to address. I do think we need, should talk about, so everybody's on the same page. Our, uh, uh, decision deadline and, uh, what we're going to do at on the next meeting, uh, because we have 60 days from the date that, uh, the application was deemed complete to, uh, arrive at a decision and come up with finding and adopt findings of fact and, and law. And by my calculation, that means we got to do it at the April 1st meeting, which we have, uh, something already scheduled. Uh, I think we need to, um, postpone that uh, so that we don't violate our own ordinance.
It's a good point. I'm glad you brought that up. So, uh, so I think, just a minute, Mac will be right there. Unless, do you have a comment about the timing?
No, but before we get to the timing, I wanted to add something. So, you know, what, what we expect of the applicant.
Go ahead.
So the key for me is number 16 on the application. Number 16 says, provide a brief description of the development or proposal. And then in parentheses, it says size and number of structures, proposed uses, et cetera. I want detail because again, George stated early on, we approve an application for what the application is for. Right now, the application in front of me says the applicant operates a boat restoration shop and boat storage yard. That's really vague, really vague for me. I want to know exactly what I'm approving because if I don't know what the application is for, I don't know what kind of supporting materials there need to be. The supporting materials need to reflect the actual application. So whatever you want to do, you need to put it there in number 16. If it needs to go over three lines, so be it. Provide the detail so we can actually say, yes, you're approved for this or no, you're not approved for that.
Thanks, Mac. Good point. Um, so is that pretty clear then applicants? Yep. Crystal, okay. JT, what's up?
No, actually. So what is unclear here? The sheds, that's, that seems pretty straightforward. The boat restoration shop, that seems pretty straightforward to me. It's all encompassing if you look up the actual definition of what it is. So what part of this is unclear to you, Mac specifically? Is it the, everything we do? Because if you look at repairing a car, a boat is very technical. You look at it on the water. It takes a certain amount of hydrodynamics for it to perform a few different characteristics, different products, but none of them have been hidden.
I'm not.
You saw the tour of the shops. You saw the elements we use. We use bronze screws, a certain amount, a certain amount of different paints, um, a few different species of wood. What, what part of that is, uh, mysterious to you?
It says in parentheses, size and number of structures.
Okay.
So I think when we were, with the application.
Size and number of structures, right?
The sheds, what's concerning you the most?
That is a concern, yes.
Okay.
You know exactly what structures you have and you are going to propose and how you're going to use them.
As Jeff said, those will be included.
I also want an explanation. You said boat storage yard singular. And yet on site, there are two boat storage yards, plural.
Unproperty.
No, there's, there's only one Mac actually.
Well, well, we will, excuse me for jumping in. We will.
Yep. Thank you. Great idea. Thanks. Getting back to the timing thing, um, if the, if the clock has started based on the completeness of the application and Georgia, you're right that we need to act on this in an upcoming meeting. What did you say? The April fir- first? It's two weeks. So Jeff Allen, can, can all of that information be supplied basically? Basically next Thursday?
Yeah, I believe I can do that within a week. Yeah. But my question is how do I disseminate it to the town? Because apparently when I sent it to the secretary, it did not get disseminated to you guys and other interested parties. What, who should I send this to?
Yes, please send it to me.
Yep. Tell me.
Very good, sir.
Yep. Okay, George?
I think what happened was we were sent an email with a link to the application on the town website, not realizing that it was a new application. And we're never provided paper copies or the opportunity to pick up paper copies. And, um, and as I said earlier, I actually took a cursory look at what was on the town website to verify that it wasn't new and that, and unfortunately I looked at the wrong parts because they were all the same. Uh, so, um, I think that's, I think Anthony will take care of that.
Yep. So based on the, on this idea that the typing is, is going to be very important and going on to the April 1st meeting, Anthony and Gary, can we get this one on the, well, I guess we're asking that this be put on the agenda, which means we would be then pushing back what we had previously thought to be on that meeting to a later meeting.
Peter, we will ensure that this is the only item on that agenda.
Thank you, Anthony. Okay. So does that help level set that expectation? George, go ahead.
Um, a question for Anthony, um, since we'll be developing, um, the findings of fact in order as part of our final decision-making at that meeting, will the town attorney be available to assist us in that regard? Yes, and in fact, uh, I might suggest let me coordinate with Peter about the, uh, the best way to, uh, to accomplish that.
Thank you. Excellent. Thanks, Anthony. Okay. So our direction is for the applicants to go, go, when you go home, there's going to be a little bit more homework to do. Submit that information in the sufficient detail, whatever that's going to be. You know, revised, edited application to be submitted. That way we would have it in hand. We're going to meet again on the first of April. This is the only thing on that agenda item. Or that's the only agenda item for that meeting. See it that way. Okay. I see a hand up. Terry or Susan, do you have a hand up for something?
No, I'm good. Thank you so much.
Okay. All right. We've covered a lot of ground. I want to thank JT, Samantha, Sean, the planning board, all the interested parties and the Butters for your comments, your interest. I really appreciate your time. I think for this part of the, of the meeting, which is this hearing, I think we're about ready to wrap it up. The planning board still has to conduct a little bit more business tonight to attend to, uh, from the March 4th, uh, meeting. I, I propose that we head in that direction and do that. Okay. So for the rest of you, we'll see you on the, on the first of April. Planning board members, you each have the, um, it's from the 4th of March. I'm thinking that's a yes. Okay. Take a minute to go through those.
We need to formally close the hearing.
Um, let's do that. I take an entertaining motion to close, formally close the hearing for the bright side agenda. Say Marina.
Second.
So can I make a motion to do that?
But you did. I'll make a motion that we close the hearing of the bright side application.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And seconded. Any more motion seconded? Any more discussion on that? All those in favor, roll call. George?
Yes.
Mac?
Yes.
Uh, Rich?
Yes.
Uh, Craig?
Yes.
And Pete?
Yes.
And one, two, three, four, five. And I vote favor that six in favor, close the hearing. Let's move on to our regular meeting.
Good night, guys.
Good night. Thank you.
Night.
Peter, I just had one comment on the minutes. This is regarding our case.
From the fourth?
From the, oh, maybe it was the 18th.
We're, we're reviewing the minutes from.
All right. Okay. I just got sent a copy of the minutes of the fourth and I noticed there was a, a regarding the waiver that wasn't part of the meeting that was included in the formal record of the minutes, which would. Regarding the waiver that wasn't part of the meeting, that was included in the formal record of the minutes, which would be unusual for minutes. To have something in there as a part of the formal record that wasn't part of the meeting, but.
So am I hearing you right then? That the fourth, the minutes from the.
I think it's, I guess it's the eighteenth as I look at it, so there, there was a notation regarding the waiver that Stacy Richard requested. That it be known as part of the official minutes of the meeting. So I just wanted to bring that up for the planning board. It would be unusual for something that wasn't brought up or happened at the meeting to be documented as part of the official minutes. Just having taken minutes as my job for Secretary of Seventeen Corporations for twenty-five years.
Okay, I got, I got what you're saying, so.
So those may have already been approved, but, um, I hadn't seen them until now. So I'm, I'd just like to bring that to the board, to the planning board's attention.
Okay.
It's fine it being circulated and, and brought up at another date, but I think that it could. Skew potential review of the, the commercial application having. Testimony that didn't occur in that meeting as part of the official minutes.
Okay, so that's from February eighteenth.
Yeah, it looks like it's February eighteenth.
Okay, so I would, gonna. Point to Julie. Julie, could we make sure to revisit that?
Yeah.
And Samantha brought up.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Good night.
Yep, thank you, George.
Um, I understand Samantha's point, it's a good one. Uh, my recollection, albeit it isn't a hundred percent. Is that we discussed that in passing to ensure it was made part of the public record?
I'd have to look, but I, I think it was, it was not, it was that it was noted that the. Record, for the record that it wasn't a public hearing, so that public testimony couldn't be accepted at the meeting.
My recollection isn't perfect, so I'll defer to whatever.
That was my understanding that it wasn't, that there wasn't, um, a meeting with public testimony. And so that public testimony couldn't be given, although there may have been discussion, it does look like the minutes reflect public testimony is happening.
So it wasn't a reference to an email that we all received?
It says regarding the waiver, Stacy Richard requested it be made known that she is concerned we were not allowed to speak regarding. The discussion on waiver, this is our biggest concern, screening along Red Oaks Lodge Road. This waiver is going to allow zero screening along the Red Oaks Lodge Road. We realize the intent is to wave screen in front of the home and business, no problem. But this is and could carry over onto our right of way since all considered one parcel on the map and application. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
From a legal perspective, so.
I'm recalling something different. I apologize.
Okay, it just looks like it was a follow-up. To me, I read it as a follow-up item. That happened after the fact where she requested that she was not allowed to speak because, because it wasn't part of a public hearing. If that makes sense. So, thank you.
Thank, thank you. Good night. So for the planning board minutes from March fourth, um, does everybody have that co- copy? Okay, are there any, have people had a chance first of all to go over the minutes? Okay. And, thank you. Any suggested edits? Hi, Mac?
An old business, uh, the second line. Residential, no construction, no more than three new, should say lots.
Oh, because lost is spelled correctly, but they meant lots. Oh, okay. Good, good point. Anything else, Mac?
Yes. Two more lines down. More discussion is also needed for, should say the appeal process.
I see, rather than he, should be the.
Yeah. And I think later in that line. Should be an S after guarantee. Charles is going to go through the performance guarantees, not a guarantee, but multiple guarantees.
Yeah. Thanks. Anything else, Mac, that you can think of, or?
I mean, just, it says Gary will communicate with town manager Anthony Wilson to extend the moratorium. Maybe something more like, you know, to discuss extension of the month moratorium. But the way, the way it reads is like Gary and Anthony are going to extend it, which really isn't how it happens. You know what I'm saying?
I do. Yes, so, so some wording such as Gary will, will communicate with the town manager, Anthony Wilson, but, about. The possibility, or I don't want to put words in your mouth, but about the possibility or the method used to extend the moratorium?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, thanks. So Julie, I hope you caught that. It's, it's being recorded, so I guess you will.
Yes, I did.
Thank you, Julie. I appreciate that. Anything else, Mac?
No, go ahead, Rich, sorry.
Rich, go for it, man. What do you got?
I got one little rinky-dink thing and online too, where the word lost was and stuff, there's, there's, uh, I think it says. Create and it probably should be created. Minor, very minor.
Gotcha, okay.
And the other thing is up in the title there, it says go to, uh, HTTP or whatever, but it isn't filled out fully.
Right, I'm, I'm guessing, we can ask Julie, Julie, um, when. Uh, you get whatever that link is, is, does it change? So that's why you can't just predict what it, that's going to be for a URL or something?
I usually type the minutes immediately following the meeting, so at that point I don't have it. But once this draft is finalized, it will be on there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Pete, you got something?
No.
No, Craig? George?
No.
So if that's it for edits, I would entertain a motion to approve or, I'd entertain a motion concerning these, these minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes. What's the date again?
Eighteen? March fourth. As amended?
Yes.
So we've got a motion to approve as amended.
I'll second it.
Uh, okay, I was.
A pregnant pause, as they used to say on CBS.
Okay, we've got a motion and seconded. Uh, any more discussion? No, all those in favor, going across the top. George?
Yes.
Uh, Mac?
Yes.
Uh, Rich?
I just realized that I'm the sixth person. I can't vote. I also, I also, uh, uh. Participated in a vote to close the meeting.
You did, yeah.
So anyway.
Let's call everybody back. And redo it.
All right, that was my mistake. I apologize. So we'll, because you're an alternate and we'll go to Craig.
Yes.
Uh, Pete?
Yes.
And I say yes, so that's five in favor, none opposed, and if we had had Rich, he would have said yes. All right, that's approved. Thank you very much. List, any town business to, to go over? Next meeting is going to dominate. First, uh, meeting of the month. So that means that we're going to have. To readjust with Charles, so it's going to be on the eighteenth. So Gary, anything you want to share with us?
Uh, yes, I would just say that there's, I have three commercial development applications waiting for planning board review. One of them, as I told you, was the old health center. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. One's the old health center, one is Dagny and Sons. And I just received one yesterday for that garage that's across the street from the town office. That wants to become a used car dealer.
Really?
Yep. So this, this, this three in the queue. And I probably, I probably have a dozen, surely, no, not a dozen, probably half a dozen, show land zoning applications.
Man. All right.
Gary, what's the garage across from the old town office? All I know is across from the old town office is Christie's store.
No, 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 I'm sorry, from the new town office.
Oh, okay.
It was bachelor, bachelor's construction.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there's a guy that wants to sell used vehicles there. So I've got an application from him yesterday.
It's not a very big lot, is it?
It's not a very big lot, no. It is not.
Thanks, Gary.
The other thing I'd like to say is, I'd like to say thank you to Mac for his time he served on the planning board. I understand this is his last meeting.
Is that going to be the case? Yeah. Thank you, Mac. Appreciate that. Thanks, Mac.
Yeah, thank, uh, thank you very much, everybody. You, um, I, I apologize again. I, if I haven't apologized enough, I know I said a lot of things I probably shouldn't have. So I'm sorry, but, uh, I appreciate everybody's time and efforts and patience with me.
You don't have to apologize, Mac, at all. You know, you did a great job.
Yeah, it's not like the rest of us don't say things we regret.
Got that right.
I think that's all I have, Peter.
All right, thanks, Gary. I, I appreciate it. Mac, thank you so much.
Will, um, I think Sarah Lynn get is Max replacement, will she be at the next meeting?
Um, that's a question for Anthony, but I think so.
That, that'll pose an issue of, I mean, it's kind of throwing her to the walls on Brightside, but, um.
Yeah.
And then it raises the issue of, you know, can she participate legally because she hadn't been involved up till now?
I don't, I'm not sure, George, is Anthony still on?
I don't see him, Gary.
Oh, he went to bed. That's an Anthony question, but I will ask it rather than.
Yep, thanks. Yep. I, I have my doubts that she'll be able to participate, so I'm.
Yeah, so do I. Yep, I do too. That's all I have.
Wouldn't be fair to her and it wouldn't be fair to the applicant.
No, it would not. You're right.
All right, any other town business to it, uh, that we want to share back with each other? Mac, again, thank you so much for all you've done for the planning board. Really appreciate it. Really appreciate your, um, view and, uh, what you, what you asked of the applicants. It's important. So thank you.
Thank you, guys. You guys do a ton of work. It's really unappreciated, seriously, by so many people. Yeah, a lot of work you guys do.
Thank you. Anything else for us to discuss this evening then? Okay, let's call it a night, gentlemen and lady Julie. We have, uh, I've got nine forty-eight, I think it's time. Everybody. All right, thanks, everybody. Have a great night.
You can drink that leftover green beer.
Good night.